Good evening and welcome to the June 12th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording. We have a representative from the Worcester Telegram and a representative from the Auburn Mass Daily who are making audio recordings. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
And our first item is public comment and we have Mark Benal who has signed up to speak about the doors at Town Hall. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. Mark Benal, Fourth Field Street, Town Meeting Member. When there are public meetings going on in this building, that a person would be responsible to make sure that all the main doors are unlocked because sometimes the back doors are locked and the front doors are unlocked. And another thing, what's going to happen with Camp Police and seeing that the tiger cops are moving out?
He wanted to know what happens with Camp Police and now that the fire department's moving out. So we can take the first issue first, Mark. I know that we have sent notices out to the chairs to ensure that they leave that back door open. I know sometimes there's a lot of traffic in and out, but we can ask the town manager to make sure that she sends a notice out to anyone who's in the building to ensure that that back door, which is a handicapped accessible door, to ensure that that is left unlocked.
Do you think you could do like a kayak scud system or... I think just telling committee chairs, it doesn't really work.
I can answer. Okay, I'll ask the town manager to address that.
Good evening, Mark. Through the chair, I do want to address that. The town administration, we have had conversations with the DPW director and facilities personnel to seek potential quotes for a keypad system to Town Hall so that we don't have to work with keys. And we could code different codes into it for different boards and committees. So we're looking at installing that type of system and as soon as we get the details on that, that will be implemented. I can't say when that will be, I would say within a couple of months. And in the interim, we have reminded Board and Commission as well as employees to leave the doors unlocked. Unfortunately, occasionally someone leaves a meeting and they don't realize there's someone coming in behind them, whether it's a member of the public or an employee, and they've locked the door behind them. But we will certainly remind everyone again, and I do think for long-term, this keypad system will work out much better.
Okay. How about Camp Police? Have you got any ideas for that? It was a hopping place at one time, but you asked me to swim there again, but I don't think that would ever happen.
Through the chair, I can tell you that right now, the DPW Facility Management Unit is using the building and until their new facility that is going to be in addition on to the DPW facility is completed, they have their workshop there. We are talking internally about some potential future recommendations for the use of the building, but we're not there yet because it's still being used.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Nancy's coming up, Mark.
(Inaudible)
The next item we have is a joint meeting with the Dog Park Committee. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask you to call your meeting to order and introduce your members here with you tonight, please.
We only have four of the seven here tonight. We have Sarah Libby, Tom Redman, we have Nicole Beckel, and I'm Ron Proudey.
And so I understand that you have a presentation and a recommendation for us tonight?
We have a very quick presentation. Most everybody here has seen this presentation so long that they know it by heart, but that's all right. I haven't learned it by heart yet, so maybe I will if I do it one more time. Okay, we have the Dog Park Committee. We were appointed last December at the request of the Board of Selectmen, so I guess we'd say we're a selectmen's committee, although it was the town manager who, under the new charter, appointed us. And we were appointed in a rather unusual way. Names were drawn from people who applied for. The only requirement was that there must be one member from each of the five voting precincts, which there are. Since then, we have been working to try and find a site, a favorable site, the best possible site, for a dog park. I think by now you probably know what a dog park is. We have some nice nude pictures on the next page of what they look like. Some are fancy, some are not. They don't have to be fancy. What they have to be to be successful is accessible, accessible to all people who use them. They have to be safe for dogs, they have to be safe for humans. Those were the two biggest characteristics that we tried to take under consideration as we worked from 20 to 25 locations of land that was available to the town for recreational purposes down to a single recommendation. Why do we need a dog park in Auburn? Well, we have about as many families with dogs as with school-aged children. There are slightly under 2,500 dogs and school-aged children in the town of Auburn. So far, that's about all the math I can give you. The committee looked at those 25 sites very quickly. We could eliminate some because they were not accessible, even though they were large size. If they were 200 or 300 yards off the nearest road and a road and parking area would have to be built, we felt that was just too expensive for us to consider. So those were eliminated. There were some that were obviously hazardous, either because of steep grades, either because of difficulty of walking over the terrain, or just because they were in an area that was... An area that I would not want my wife, my daughter, my sister to be alone in because they're too isolated. So that was another reason that made eliminating sites quite easy. Very quickly, we got down to maybe eight sites. Members of the committee visited all of these sites on more than one occasion. We made several visits. We took other people with us. We took the town engineer, or had the town engineer go and look at these sites and report back to us on what he found as far as engineering concerns would be in the site. Eventually, we got down to a handful of sites and it wasn't too much after that that we came to the conclusion that the site of choice would be somewhere in Lemansky Park. Lemansky Park has a lot of advantages for us. Number one, it's large. Number two, it is already heavily used and... And I'm taking this out of order, so please forgive me. As someone who just watches the activities, all of these things go on at Lemansky at some time of year or all year. There is youth baseball, senior league baseball, youth softball, adult softball. All of those are on illuminated fields. There is youth football, which is a name that we now give to Pawtucket when we decided we couldn't make tackles with our heads anymore. There is an adult Auburn tag football league that uses one of the areas on Sundays. There has been, in the last couple of months, the startup of a youth lacrosse league. There is tennis, there is summer basketball, there is youth hockey learning and youth hockey games. There are both youth skating and teaching of skating. There... It's occasionally still high school hockey. There is youth soccer, both boys and girls, and both youth and high school age soccer. There are summer recreation programs, there is sledding in the winter, there is skateboarding in a particular area, and there is a tot playground. I'm sure that I've skipped several of the uses, but those uses are all current. And since I've been doing the regularly since December, those are the things that I have Why do I say Lemansky has site advantages? Well, Lemansky, of all the sites that we looked at, is the most level. And if you're talking about people of all ages and various infirmities, a level site is probably the most important thing you can have. We would like a dog park to be a place where people with disabilities, where people who don't walk too well, where these people can have access to the site and exercise their Lemansky has that. It is absolutely flat. It will be easy to do what little grading is necessary to put an entrance, a double-gated entrance or two double-gated entrances, depending on whether you have one for small dogs and one for large dogs, or a joint double-gated entrance for both large and small dogs. You can have that. You can have... And if you put up the site now, okay, that's the site that we recommend. A site in the foreground that looks larger, because it is in the foreground, contains approximately 30,000 square feet. As we look at what other communities have done and what people who advocate for dog parks are advocating for, they're saying now that 20,000 feet probably is sufficient in most communities. That site has 30,000 feet and if you went down to 20, there are lots of different variations you could make over it. It does require moving the Patrolman Lucas Skateboard Park to the smaller rectangle on the right-hand side next to... Oh, Brayman Street, Brayman Road? You guys have lived there? That site, when they last did the removal of fill and gravel, that site was leveled, it is perfectly leveled now. So it doesn't require much work to be done to that site. It is small, but the area, there is about 10,000 square feet, which is the size of an average house lot in Auburn. So it's an area that would be adequate for skateboarding. We brought the recommendation to the Selectmen a week or so ago, and I'd like to... Because I wasn't careful about doing this, I would say that the seven of us worked pretty hard on this, but we had lots of expert help. The site is also endorsed by the following people: Police Chief Andy Salukas, Animal Control Officer Amy Kontois, Department of Public Works Director Bill Coyle, who's also the town engineer, Town Manager Julie Jacobson, Town Recreation Director Kristen Pampas, and Town Planner Matt Benoit. All of them have spoken in favor of this site. And we felt as a group of neophyte dog park designers, and we're not designers, believe me, that getting information from all of those who have different areas, who have safety concerns and engineering concerns and planning concerns and financing concerns and animal concerns, having them all in agreement that this is the best site that we can find is probably the strongest recommendation that we can have. We know that initially, because we weren't careful when we gave our first information, there was concern that the wooded area and the burn that steep hill that separates the park from the abutting houses was going to be removed. That is not the case. Not a tree, not a shovel full of dirt is going to be removed from the woodland or from the... I call it burns, really a steep hillside, steep enough so that I look at it, but don't try to walk it. That provides screening for most of the homes that are closest to it. For example, on that plan, which we call Option A, these are the houses that are the closest to the two parks. There is 48 Rethel Street, which is 280 feet from the skating park. 52 Rethel Street is 234 feet. 54 Rethel Street is 343 feet. From the dog park on the same plan, 381 Oxford Street North is 235 feet. 383 Oxford Street North is 248 Street. 385 Oxford Street North is the closest, at 173 feet, but it also has probably the sharpest, steepest of the drop-offs there. And 399 Oxford Street is 202 feet from the dog park and 24 Rethel Street is 326 feet. So there is a considerable amount of distance, much more distance, than between abutters and abutters' houses from this path. Because of this, Option A is our recommendation without doubt. We don't find anything else in the list that we look at that would be satisfactory for a dog park. Now, the dog park, in order for us to finance it as best we can, will require a grant from a group called the Stanton Foundation. Dr. Stanton was the early pioneer of color TV and of presidential debates on television. When he died, he died as a friend of animals and left a considerable part of his considerable fortune to the development of dog parks in Massachusetts. As of now, he... His foundation, he's been dead since 2006, his foundation has agreed to finance 10 Massachusetts dog parks per year. They paid in total the design cost, 90% of the construction cost, which have ranged in parks, in their parks, from $100,000 to $225,000. And they also pay 5% every six months after the completion of the dog park if you need additional equipment or replacement of equipment. The 10% that they don't pay has to be raised by the town, but in our town, we have a dog-loving group who has agreed to raise that 10% for the town. So what we're talking about is whatever cost it would be to move that skating park. It doesn't need the five-foot-high fence that it now has. 10,000 square feet would be sufficient for the activities that go on there. And the moving of the site has been endorsed by the Chief of Police and the Patrolman's Association of the Auburn Police. The Lucas family has, since their son's death, left town. There are no direct family members still living in Auburn. We believe that in his memory, it should be retained. The monument, which has suffered some toleration in the years that have passed, needs to be cleaned and moved to the new location. That will be the need in terms of relocating that. We guess, from looking at the 25 dog parks in Massachusetts that Stanton has already built, and there are six underway this year, that the average cost is about $8 per square foot. The smaller the cost, obviously, the higher the square foot cost is because if you have a four-acre dog park with lots of area not being used, there isn't any need to put expensive furnishings in that. The Stanton Foundation has a higher approval rate of dog parks in and in association with recreational complexes. And seven out of the eight dog parks that our committee was able to get complete information from have an affiliation with a 501(c)(3) organization similar to the Fur Friends of Auburn that helps with the annual maintenance and helps with the annual maintenance costs. So again, our recommendation, and we don't... Because we put an Option B on one, I think people went away thinking that we thought of them as equals. We don't. We think Option A is far superior to Option B, which crowds the dogs in an area where there would be considerable activity that would be disturbing to the dogs. So we believe that by separating, we will be better off. Option A also removes the dog park by 200-some feet from the child's tot lot, which we'd like to... I'm not going to go any further. If you have questions, we would be happy to answer them. We do have an appendix. If you doubt the information that we've given, you certainly are welcome to take anything from the appendix that we have. And it's mostly computer websites that the information is from.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So how we'll proceed is I'll open it up to board questions for the Dog Park Committee. Once we complete any questions that the Board of Selectmen have, I will open it up to public comment. I hope that we will go till approximately 8 o'clock. We've had a couple of meetings on this now. I'll ask, when I open it up, if you'll come forward, leave your name and address for the record. And if someone speaks and they've already addressed your comments, please just don't repeat all the comments, just say, "I'm concerned with traffic, I'm concerned with barking dogs," whatever it is, so we can have all that information on the record. We are going to hear from the Fur Friends group as well, but right now, I'm going to open it up to members of the Board of Selectmen for any questions they may have for the Dog Park Committee. Do we have any questions? Mr. Holstrom?
Thank you for being here tonight and thanks for all the work you've done. I know that you've done a lot of research on this. I did walk the site today. I know the site from years past with my grandmother being on Oxford Street, so I know the lot. There is a significant drop-off at the rear of 44. It's about 30 feet, and then behind 24 goes to about 80 feet. It looks like there's a sufficient buffer there that wouldn't be a problem. One of the concerns that they have is the skate park. The skate park being so close to, excuse me, 44 and 52 Rifle Street, that right now, that buffer is fine, but there will be something hurt there. Is there any way that that skate park can be moved into any other location? I know that we're talking about a dog park here. The dog park is something I think we definitely need, but I think that part of the program comes along with the skate park. Can the skate park be moved to another location in that field so that it's not backing up so closely to the residents on Rifle Street?
I think that the only concern would be if that eliminates some other activity. The site is pretty thoroughly used now, and I don't know if you could move it. We looked at other... Before we came to the conclusion that this location would be the best for both the skating park and the dog park, we looked at particularly large, open field, which is called the multipurpose field for good reason. It is used over and over again, not constantly like a dog park would be used, but it is used seasonally and it is used once a week or twice a week or three times a week. It's used when Auburn soccer has multi-town tournaments. So I don't know. There was nothing that we could see for moving the skating park and keeping it within Lemansky. I'm sure there are... There might be other sites that you can move the skate park to that would be big enough.
And Mr. Proudey, I guess that is my question through the chair. That is my question. Can that skate park be moved away from that corner instead of that area that's marked up there where it's closest to Brayman Street? Can that be moved in away from the Brayman Street and Rifle Street resident backyards?
Well, there is drainage that runs between that location and the track. There is a gully, surface gully between them. I don't know. I don't know whether it could or not. We did not think that combining the dog park and the skate park in the same location with a separation of 10 feet would be particularly good for the dogs. Because of constant motion and noise from skateboarders, this would be upsetting to dogs.
Thank you, Mr. Proudey.
Could we move it to other spots? We might. We've pretty much used that, though. We added to the baseball fields. We took the area that was initially taken for the park across the street for the police station. That would have been part of Lemansky at one time.
Through the chairs, if I could also just add, I think one of the reasons why that particular spot was looked at is because it's not currently being used. And we know most of the... The majority of the rest of the land is being used in some way, shape, or form in some season. We don't... I don't think we have enough information to say whether or not another piece of land in that property could not or could be used for the skate park. I think that's more of a question for perhaps the town manager or someone else, but we... One of the top priorities of a committee was to not take anything away from any groups or any citizens that are using anything on the park. So that was why that was the spot chosen for that. I don't think we would necessarily go against moving it to another spot. However, like Mr. Proudey said, combining it in a crowded location along a parking lot next to a skate park would be a bit of a concern for safety.
And just a follow-up?
Sure.
And through the chair, again, there's been some concerns come up with traffic along there. The skateboard park is used until later on at night, almost dusk, almost dark. And there's been significant traffic in and out of there, and they're racing in and out of there. So it's not being properly patrolled. And so I guess probably one of the things you want to look at is where can we move that skate park? Again, the dog park, not so much a concern, but the skate park, there's two different types of people that use the dog park versus the skate park. And they feel that that traffic is sufficient enough, and there's been complaints at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning. Not that the skaters are in there, but they do have that traffic. So the concern is that, you know, we'll put it in a place where it's a little bit more easily to be monitored. People with dogs are not going to be out there at 2 o'clock in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other board members have any questions at this time? Mr. Carpenter?
Just a quick question. You mentioned motion and...
You mentioned motion and noise. Where you're budding the track, which is, as we all know, is well-used. What do you intend to do to shield the animals from seeing the constant parade of people utilizing the track, people using the soccer field when they have games? You know, it is a very busy corner, and you also have the tot lot, which is very busy as well. So to suggest that somehow option B was worse because motion is going to be in place, there's motion all around there. There's cars, there's people walking, there's people using that facility, as you say, very keenly. So on top of the fact that we're asking the town to pick up the tab to relocate a park, and we haven't even talked to the people who use the park. So for me, before I would even suggest accepting this site, I would like to talk to the people who use this skate park, which is there, and see if we're going to spend money, which I don't necessarily agree we should be spending this money, if there's any improvements they would like. This is about 20 years old. They might, there might be, as with any sport, there are changes to equipment, there's changes to behaviors and the like. So, you know, I don't want to sit there and say, "It's going to go here, it's going to go there, it's going to go..." It's got to go where the kids can utilize it. And because we have this multi-use, somebody can bring their kid to a game while their other child is in the skate park. So, no. My concern is we're making a decision for someone, and we haven't even had the good manners to ask them what it is that they want. So, you know, I don't necessarily agree that that's the best location for a new skate park, on top of the fact that we're shrinking this park. Again, that's, you are impairing somebody's use. Maybe they don't need what they have. I don't know. Maybe they'd like more. I don't know, but I'd like to find out. But I do certainly appreciate the committee's work. I know it's not an easy task anytime you take anything on, but, you know, these are concerns that I have in addition to, I have several unanswered questions that I'm pursuing. So I'm going to be asking the board tonight to hold any vote until the July meeting so that I can continue to learn more about this. So that's something that I discussed with the chair earlier today. Bless you. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, if I could make just a comment. Thank you for asking that question. I think it's important to include people who are using the skate park. And that is actually, that was one of my assignments as I teach in the high school. And I made about a dozen attempts to get in touch with anybody who uses the skate park, and it was unfortunately unsuccessful. I know it's used because I'm there, I'm a coach, I see it used, but unfortunately, I'm not recognizing the kids that are using it. Through conversations with my students, I'm hearing that several of them do not attend our school, whether they go to a private school or they simply don't live in our town. I'm honestly not sure, but I'm certainly not opposed to getting their opinion on it. I think that's very important, and I totally agree with you. But I did want to let you know that we did consider that, and I did make several attempts to get in touch with people who do use it. And the second thing was the funds and the question of the funds with relocating the skate park. And I don't remember if at the last meeting we addressed this, but it is in need of repair, and there are, or would need to be, funds to resurface the skate park. And it is the belief that those funds that would be allocated anyways to resurfacing that skate park would go to the relocation of the skate park. And I can't say, no one can really say until we know for sure the size and the location and what would be required, but it would be hopefully, you know, an even swap for the relocation versus the resurfacing.
There is no illumination at that end of the park. There are no lights in that area, and according to the posted signage, the park closes at 9:00. So if people are using it at 1:00 or 2:00 in the night, they are trespassing, and certainly the town has the right to get them out of that area at that time.
And this follow-up, Madam Chair? Because I did ask the question. It isn't in the budget. It isn't in the CIP. It's five years away. So it isn't, it is not an expense that the town is planning on. Okay, so it isn't like we were thinking, "Oh, gosh, we're going to do it tomorrow." This is, their belief is, "We've got four to five more years." So this is something outside the norm. We're asking, you know, that the budget be adjusted, which may or may mean that the department that is responsible has to do without some other piece of equipment because, you know, funds are not always plentiful. But, so I just want to be clear on that, that this is not something that is contemplated in the current budget or in the current CIP.
Thank you. Are you all set, Mr. Cappenter?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Do any other board members have any questions right now? Before I open it up to public comment, I do want to make mention of a petition that the Board of Selectmen received this afternoon. We were sent a copy via email. We have not had an opportunity to review it. It just came in this afternoon. It appears that there are 48 signatures coming from 24 homes, I believe it is, on Rethel Street and Oxford Street North. There was an email attached to the petition as well that made many comments about the skate park again. We have not been able to respond or answer to those comments. So I will now open it up, and Mr., and please just raise your hand if you want to be recognized, and remember to state your name and address for the record. Mr. Benal. And while Mr. Benal is making his way up there, please, you're welcome to make comments. If you have a question, I will keep a running list of the questions after all the comments have been made. We will attempt to answer as many questions as we can tonight through the committee, and if they can, if they can't answer them, if there are other people from town administration here. Otherwise, we will keep a list of those questions and get those answers for the next meeting. Mr. Benal?
Mark Benal, Town Meeting, Member, Precinct 4. I'm not in favor of moving the skate park. Steven was a classmate of mine in Auburn High School and a great person. Why can't you just move it to the dog park to open spot that's at Lemansky Park?
We're going to take your question, Mr. Benal, and then we're going to go through them and answer them all later. Is that your only comment?
Yeah, I just, I think it's just, I was watching one of the meetings, and some people, they want like, the first question they ask is if there's a dog park, like if they're buying something, wouldn't they be more interested with the schools and the financial of the towns? Was that one of the meetings I was watching at home? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benal. Mrs. Sarkisian, if you're up, if you want to go next?
I'm Nancy Sarkisian, to Robinson Road, and I'm actually going to speak on behalf of the Fur Friends.
Could you just pull the mic a little closer? I'm having a hot time hearing you.
And I'm going to read a statement, actually. So, "The Fur Friends of Auburn are a group of dog-loving dog owners who have advocated for the construction of a dog park where well-behaved canine citizens can exercise and interact safely. We have committed to provide, through fundraising efforts, 10% of the hard construction costs, which are not covered by the Stanton grant. As we have stated most recently in the letter dated April 2, 2017, to the Dog Park Committee and copied to the Town Manager, the Fur Friends are not a nonprofit group. However, we have contacted a lawyer in town who will assist us in the process of becoming a nonprofit group once the Board of Selectmen votes to approve the Lemansky Park location, the former skate park location, for the construction of a dog park, and then receives the approval from the Stanton Organization to utilize funds available through their grant. It will then be our intent to work with town officials to design and develop a fenced-in, off-leash dog park according to the guidelines set forth by the Stanton Foundation and the guidelines for a successful dog park established through the American Kennel Club. The Fur Friends are committed to providing, through fundraising efforts, the 10% of the hard construction costs. It has been suggested that the Fur Friends begin collecting monetary donations in the form of pledges. We feel very strongly that at this point, asking for any type of donation is not only awkward but also premature, as plans are not yet concrete. We are certain, however, that our efforts will be better received once we have a commitment from the town that this project is going forward." I don't know if anyone wanted to ask any questions about fundraising efforts or anything like that. I'd be more than happy to answer.
Do any members have any questions about the fundraising? Mr. Cappenter?
I guess my concern is you're waiting until the process is too far along. It's going to take a considerable amount of time to raise the money that you're committed to doing. Also, we've been, we've been doing this for well over a year. I know the staff has been doing it even before that, and it seems like we keep getting a different commitment. We keep getting different opinions, we keep getting different thoughts as to when you're going to do this. For me, I need to know that the 10% is there because at some point, the foundation's going to come to the town, and there's no appropriation to cover this cost. So to me, waiting until we choose a site, waiting until we get approval for a grant, which may or may not happen in this year or next year, is, to me, makes me very uncomfortable. So I just want you to know that, that I'm very uncomfortable with this partnership that doesn't seem to be, it seems to be one-sided on the town's side, that we're doing, we're putting all this effort and all this energy into trying to get this park, and yet I keep hearing, "Well, later, later, later." And to me, we're already late in the game. We've formed a committee, we've had the staff do this not once but twice to go over these, to try and find a suitable location. You know, in addition to the fact that you're asking the town to select a site, you won't accept any other site, you're going to insist on this site, this option, and that's incurring expense that isn't in the budget, and that's a concern to me because, again, we have a budget process, we don't not just add things and take things out of CIP, we don't just do those things. So I know you've had conversations with different people, and that's wonderful, but I think we need to see that you are serious about raising this money and that when the time comes, that money is going to be there. Because if it's not there, it doesn't matter that we have this, that we've relocated the skate park. It doesn't matter that we've got the grant, because we can't affect the grant, we cannot accept the money. So how long do you think it's going to take you to raise, not $25,000, because I'm told that there's other amenities that you may or may not want that are not covered in the grant, that you're going to need to raise? So it's not 25, and I don't know what the number is, because I don't know what you want in this park. I don't know what kind of agility equipment you want. I have not heard one thing other than, "We want a park." So if you can illuminate that for me, I would definitely appreciate it.
So you've seen the pictures. That's the park. I would have to refer back to the Town Manager as far as we've discussed the possibility of a memorandum of understanding to just prove that we are committed to this and we will do this. But as far as fundraising, so I've spoke to several companies in town, and no one is going to give us any type of a donation or anything like that unless they know for sure that this is going to happen. I mean, I don't know, we have not changed our stance at all whatsoever. We have always said that we would provide the 10% as long as we're involved in deciding where the park goes, the design of the park, and what it needs. Our, as far as our, we have sat back and let the Dog Park Committee do their job. They've done an enormous amount of research. They have told us what they thought was the best location. It's not that we are putting our foot down and saying, "We'll only take this, we'll only take that." But as far as the option B, people that know dogs will know that with the constant, and it's not people going in and out, it's the constant up and down of the skateboards, up and down on the rails, whatever you would call it, that's a noise that dogs aren't familiar with. That's going to create reactivity in dogs. Reactivity in dogs is going to create, could create barking, aggressiveness. I mean, I'm not a dog expert, but the little, in the little amount of time that I had to look that up, that's what I came across as far as, you know, the constant noise and the, just the congestion of putting those two parks together. I mean, honestly, if, you know, we're not going to stand here and say, "We just want a dog park, put it anywhere you want just so we can have a dog park." We want a dog park that's going to be good for the community, and we want a dog park that's going to be good for the dogs. And that may sound funny to people that are not dog owners or dog lovers, but if we're going to invest into something, we want it done, and we would like it done the best way possible so that the dogs and the people that are going there can enjoy it. As far as our fundraising efforts, I don't know if you've ever done fundraising before, but I've done quite a lot. I don't see it being an issue, and as far as the $25,000, we don't know what the park's going to cost. We don't know that the park's going to cost $250,000. So therefore, putting that $25,000 figure on there, we're not committing, we're committing to 10%. We're not saying, "Oh, we're going to raise 25, 35, whatever." We're committing to 10%. I've talked to a lot of other parks, friends of people, friends of groups, and they don't see it as an issue. We don't see it as an issue. But it's up to the town if they want to work with us. If they want to work with us, we're more than happy to work with them and to provide them with whatever type of a commitment that we can. That's really all I have to say.
So you're not an organization?
Not as of yet, but we do have a lawyer that is willing to work with us to become a nonprofit organization.
So my point to that is you're not an organization.
I can't hear you.
You're not an organization. So a memorandum of understanding has no meaning. Who do I hold accountable to this? You either need to be an organization legally recognized or not, and...
Mrs. Sarkisian, I'm just going to let Mr. Cappenter make his comments, and you've made your...
I mean, the legality of it, I don't know.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Cappenter.
You know, so to me, whether it's 250, that's the only number that we've been given. So to me, that's a hard number. I have no idea what the agility is, what equipment you want, what kind of park you want. I see a rectangle on the screen. That's, that's all I've seen. So to me, I want definition as to what it is that you're looking for and what it is that we can do to help you get that particular thing.
I have to say one more thing. Sorry for the chair. The members of the board were all contacted, and we specifically asked if anyone had any questions or concerns that we could help them out with, and we did not receive phone calls at all. I did talk to Mr. Bertham because he was home. I talked to Mr. La Liberty. Other than that, we did not speak to anyone else.
You spoke to me.
Oh, I spoke to you as well, I'm sorry. So we did ask, we did ask if we could, if there was information that we could try to get, and we didn't get a response back.
I'm going to open it up to further comments. Who would like to go next?
I'm Proudey. I'd just like to add, $250,000 is not a hard number that you heard from us. You heard from us 100,000 to 225,000. Those are the parameters of parks that have been built. And so the 10% is considerably different for a $100,000 dog park than it would be for a $225,000 dog park. So if the only numbers you've heard are from this committee, which got them from Stanton, it is not a hard $250,000.
The number I heard was from the Town Manager, but this was the maximum grant we were going for, and this is the only number I heard.
And we have never said that we should go for the maximum or that we should build the one and only best Disney World dog park in Auburn.
Why would you accept second best, Mr. Proudey?
I'd accept anything from you guys now. You say, "What have they done?" I don't know what they have done. I don't represent them. But I know what you've done as far as this committee is concerned... But I know what you've done as far as this committee is concerned. You've given us a job, and we did the job, and that's all you've done. You didn't even appoint the committee. You had to tell me, and I know that that's what the charter says.
Not allowed, yes.
But don't tell me that you've done a lot of work. We're the ones who did the work at your bidding.
Mr. Proudey, I'm going to open it up.
I have done considerable work.
Mr. Cappenter. Excuse me one minute.
On the project.
Please, hold, Mr. Cappenter, please hold on for a minute.
Yep.
I just, I do want to move this meeting along. Mr. Cappenter, I'll allow you to make a statement, then I want to move on to the public comment. We appreciate the work the committee has done, and I think it's important that we get the factual information out here tonight and give people an opportunity. I know that this is a highly emotional issue for many people, but I don't think it's going to do anyone any good to make any personal attacks at this point.
No, I don't take it as a personal attack. I take it as someone who hasn't asked me what I've done, what I have been doing, and I can tell you I've spent many, many hours, and the staff can tell you that I've spent many, many hours asking many, many questions about this very project. So, to suggest that I've just sat here and let you do all the work is incorrect. I have always been someone who has done a lot of my own research, and I think you know that. So, I have certainly not just waited around for a committee to tell me what to think. I've actually thought for myself. So, you know, I know it's fun to come in and pick on, you know, the guy who has a little different opinion, but I just want you to know that while I do respect you...
We're going to move on, Mr. Cappenter.
I'm going to work through my process.
We're going to move on, Mr. Cappenter. In the front, please, please go up. Please hold your applause until the end of the meeting, till the end of this public comment session. If you could give your name and address for the record, please. If you have questions, I'll keep a list of questions that we'll answer after everyone has spoken. If you have comments, please feel free to make those now.
Joe Fresco of 48 Rithel Street. So, I've known about this probably two to three months, maybe a little less than that. Had many different thoughts about what we should do with the dog park, where it is, behind our house, et cetera. A lot of things were mentioned tonight, and I appreciate the committee, Board of Selectmen, town manager, all doing what they were, you know, assigned to do. But when we think about dogs before our children, dogs before a dedicated officer, dogs before our butters, and dogs before our residents, I start to think about what the dog park actually is going to mean to Auburn versus, you know, what it's going to mean to the dogs. And looking at this, and I'm glad it's still up, we mentioned many things about moving the skateboard park, which is really a lot of our concern, or my concern, and the trees here between the Rithel Street residents, the Bremen Street resident, and the skateboard park, looks like it's plenty of trees, but we're looking at a top-down view. If you look through the trees, it's not as dense as it shows here. Also, you're thinking about, if you're not thinking about, the seasonality, where those leaves are all gone at some point, and they're gone for about four to five months. And then, we can see, as people have mentioned before, as it's not a big deal, Rithel Street can see the mass pike. Rithel Street can hear the noise. What's the difference if you put a skateboard park or a dog park behind that house? They already have the noise. They already have the traffic. I don't think that's the right way to go about looking at the residents of Auburn and the butters, of how we should just put something in someone's backyard. Secondly, more to the point, there was many things brought up about noise. I don't know what's in the middle of the track. I believe I've seen lacrosse, soccer. I know I see basketball up above. All of those use whistles. Whistles, I'm sure, is not pleasant for dogs. So, having a dog park directly next to an area that uses whistles or any type of noise, as mentioned a few times here, is probably not advantage for the dogs as well as the people that are, you know, working, you know, playing around. The other thing we were talking about is having your kids use the skateboard park. As a family member might be watching the basketball game, they can look down on the skateboard park and see, "Oh, there's my child, safe, sound, while I'm watching my other kid play basketball." If it's way down the other side, I think there'd be much concern about, you know, having their kids, you know, go play that far away from an area that they're already sitting and watching a game. As for distance, it was brought up in the presentation. We did a great job determining the distance from the dog park to the residence, but there was nowhere the distance between the dog, I'm sorry, the skateboard park to the residence. I believe that you'll see that a lot of the distances will be quite less than what the dog park is. So, I'm very concerned about that. As for where the skateboard park is being proposed, two things. One, yes, none of Lucas's family is here in Auburn. Neither is Officer Tarantino's. I believe they're in Leicester. So, is that right for us to move a dedication of a skateboard park someplace else because there's no more family here? I think that's wrong, and I don't think we should do that. So, a skateboard park should stay where it is, is my opinion. If we did decide to move it in that flat location, which I agree, there is about 50 to 70 feet wide by about 100 feet long, probably can fit in a different configuration, the same size as the current one, thinking that the cost of resurfacing would be the same cost as building a new one. I don't think that's true. I don't have the numbers. That'd be a question for you to make sure the numbers are right. Third, or second or third to that, is that if you put the park on that location, there is steep hills, berms beyond that location to the street side of Bremen Street and to the gully side going towards the drainage, the runoff from the track. We can't go without a fence. The first lawsuit we'll get is if someone falls off the skateboard park and goes down the hill and cracks their head open, and then we're on the hook. I just think we need to think long and hard to go forward with a dog park and moving a skateboard park. And I'm going to back up one more moment. I apologize. Again, a lot of information that we've received over the months is that going through the 12 locations, there was additional comments on a lot of locations. I will spare you the time reading those, but the one, the one comment that was not noted in this location is that there isn't 30,000 square feet available, because if there was, we would not be moving a skateboard park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the back.
Hi, my name is Gail Stusko, 11 Rithel Street. Most of the concerns that I wrote down have already been answered, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I'm a dog owner. I've had two dogs in the 39 years I've lived here that never, I won't say never needed a dog park. I understand there is a good need for a dog park, but I'm also a parent, and I find that I have a huge concern with putting a dog park in an area where we have, as you said, kids playing, lacrosse, skateboarding, ball games, basketball park. No matter what kind of fence you build, no matter what kind of safety you put in there, all it takes is one person opening that gate and a dog getting out. And as they said, they want the dogs, you don't want the dogs to be scared by noise at other locations. I have a dog. I know how dogs can be spooked by any kind of noise. I think it's a huge disservice to the people already using that location for their children, for their families, to risk putting a dog park there. No matter how well-behaved a dog is, they can change at the slightest instance. And it seems to be there is more concern on the safety of the dogs and the safety of the dog owners than there are on, against the people who are already using the dog park. The noise thing, I'm on the opposite side of Rithel Street. Yes, do I hear stuff that goes on over there? I do. I don't, I can't say whether I'm going to hear the skate park when it gets moved. I can't say I'm going to hear the dogs barking. I would bet you, as they say, dollars to donuts, I will, because I have a dog that barks. And you, you know, and once you have 20 or 30 dogs barking, everyone's going to hear it. Now, my other, so, that being said, I just think that some of the concern is in the wrong place. My other two questions is that there must be some kind of liability insurance that's going to have to be on this dog park. Who pays for that? In the event a dog does get out and bites somebody and sues somebody, who do they sue? The town? Do we then have to pay lawyers and all of that, you know, that goes with that? I mean, I haven't heard anything mentioned about that. I do think it would be nice for dog park, for people who love their dogs, say, "I love my dog," even though he drives me crazy sometimes. I love my dog. I'd like to see people who have dogs that, like, maybe can't walk their dog a mile or two miles, like we have ours walked, that want a safe place. But it has to be a place that is safe for everyone else around it. That is my main concern, is the safety of everyone else in Lemansky complex. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Katar. I'm reading from my parents at 4 Bag at Chalk Street, Auburn. This is just a list of facts that has been sent to the Board of Selectmen. Over the past six months, Auburn residents have shown the Board of Selectmen that they want and support a dog park in Auburn. In October 2016, there were approximately 90 letters of support from Auburn residents were handed to the Board of Selectmen prior to their meeting. November 2016, a change.org online petition was created and approximately 159 Auburn residents signed in support of the project. This petition was sent directly to the Board of Selectmen. May 2017, Auburn residents were asked to send letters of support to the Board of Selectmen. 50 letters were sent, approximately. June 2017, Alpa's Pet Salon collected 38 signatures of support from Auburn residents and clients. Dog owners and dog lovers want a safe, off-leash place in Auburn where they can spend quality time and play freely with their dogs without breaking the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have a second, go on.
Hi, Dina Shara, 284 Southbridge Street, Auburn. I also represent Alpa's Pet Salon. I've spent way too much time in these meetings, like the sitting next to hostile people who are anti-dog people, while my grand dog sits at home alone, unwalked. Way too much time spent here. I'm going to address a couple of issues that I hear being raised. Dogs live with families, which include children. That should not be an issue. Dogs don't escape with a double gated system. There's no way for that. As far as trees can be used to buffer the normal sounds like traffic, whistles, and children. The problem with the skateboard park is that is not a normal sound that dogs are exposed to, and that can create an anxiety, and some dogs react to that. Whereas, they'll be so focused on it when another dog approaches to see that, "What's that noise? Where is it coming from?" That dog can then turn on the other dog. That is the concern with a skateboard park being next to the dog park. Not a children's playground, not a basketball, not the track. It's specifically the skateboard park. As far as the skateboard issues, why don't we establish a skateboard park committee and ask them to create a 501(c)(3), just as you're asking us to do for the dog park? Have them be responsible for fundraiser. How many skateboarders are there in the residence? Do they register? Do they pay a fee? We can do that. I lived in Lake Mary in Florida, and they had a skateboard park. We all paid a fee. We went through the town. We got a little card that said we could use the skateboard park. You can raise the funds that way, too, and that can cover moving it or relocating it. As far as Officer Lucas, he's not specifically buried there. Wherever we put the park, we're going to still honor him. That shouldn't even be an issue. No matter where it's located, we will still be honoring him. And lastly, Dan Carpenter, you are still not on board with this project. I've sat in too many meetings and seen you oppose it. We've jumped all the hoops, created the dog park committee. They went out and did all the research. We had already done research. Your own dog park, a dog officer had done research. We've all stepped through this so many times, and we've revisited all these sites more than once. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to make a comment? In front here, please.
Hi, my name is Sharon Sampson. I live at 44 Rithel Street, and I have some concerns about the dog park going in my, what is essentially my backyard. I'm in a butter. I didn't see any graphic about how far that was going to be from my house, the dog park or the skate park, but the skate park will go right behind my home, and I have concern about the noise. I'm a nurse that works the night shift, so I sleep during the day shift. I sleep in the daytime, and I have concern about the amount of noise coming from either the skateboarders or a bunch of dogs running around barking down there. I really, you know, I have a concern about it. My other concern is that could we have really found a busier site in Auburn to put a dog park than at Rocketland where there's sports being played, little kids running around? They're playing basketball all the time there. I'm not sure what kind of fencing we're talking about for the dog park, but unless it's completely obstructing the dog's view, that's going to encourage the dogs to bark. So, I'm not sure if that's even been brought up. And then, again, the traffic on Rithel Street. Rithel Street has needed to be paved for a considerable amount of time. It's been patched. It's an awful condition, and this is just going to bring more people up and down my street. So, that's another concern I have as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No other public comments? Thank you for all those who have made them. So, we don't have a lot of questions, Mr. Chairman, but if we can, and I think actually one of them, we've already addressed, the, I'm not sure if you want to take it with the town manager, the issue of liability insurance and what's involved with that.
No, go ahead. Through the chair, I'll start, and please, Nicole or any members join. We have looked at the rules and regulations for 15 to 20 different parks that are existing throughout Massachusetts, and almost every single one of them does have a stipulation that it is stated liability is at the risk of the user. And we have also spoken to our insurance agent as well as town council, and we have to post that, and everybody who uses the park takes personal responsibility for their animal, whether that animal were to cause a problem in the park or on a public street in the town. It's the same liability. You are responsible for your pet if your pet goes after somebody and you were negligent. So, the liability is not a concern from the town, because every dog owner is responsible for their own pet. Did you, did you find anything different I want to add?
Mr. Chairman?
I would say only this to the butters, that the park is now used by many of your butters who own dogs, because I go there almost every day, and I see people walking to the site with their dogs. So, they are now using it. There are almost as many, and on some days, there are more people with dogs in the park than there are walking the track or pushing baby carriages, as some homes do, on the track. There are people, I don't know, maybe they walk from the other side of town, but I assume they're from your neighborhood, because they're walking there with dogs. Most of them on leashes, some of them not. And in terms of liability, Massachusetts has a, what they call a strict liability dog bite state, and it's Mass. General Law's Chapter 140, Section 155, that dog owners are liable for injuries that their dogs cause, not a community that houses a dog park.
Through the chairs, one of the comments, it wasn't really a question, but a statement that I'd like to address. There was a suggestion that dogs are being held above children and an officer who had fallen, and that's, I mean, at least as far as committee, is simply not true. When we're talking about safety, we are talking about everybody's safety. When we're talking about safety, we are talking about everybody's safety. The double gated entry is a great prevention to any incidents, but with any public situation, whether there's a dog park or not, there's always risk of accidents happening, unfortunately. But in regards to, I believe it's Officer Lucas, am I correct? And I'm sure the town manager can speak on this behalf, but she did speak with the family, or was it the Slukas?
Developer.
The police chief. Developer, okay. So the person who was responsible for raising the funds and creating the-
The police chief she spoke with.
And police chief. No, also the person, I believe, who-
Through the chair, yes, I see where you're going. I did speak with Norman Flash, who was the gentleman who was responsible for the fundraising for the skateboard park, and asked for his input on this, let him know this was several months ago, so we did reach out in addition to the outreach that you tried to do with the users. Again, it's very hard to track down users and who they are, and they are young children, but we did speak to the person who put the whole thing together, and he was very supportive of relocating it. His concern was he wanted to just make sure there was still a skateboard park, and he wanted to make sure that we maintained it adequately, and he also felt that we should be looking, if possible, to, if we wanted to reduce the size, if it was still usable and still could be used for the activities that it's currently used for now, that he had absolutely no problem with it. He was thrilled that we wanted to make an investment into the park in the future.
Mr. Bylan, did you want to come up and say something? Just, yep, up there, please, in your name and address for the record.
My name's Jeff Bylan. I live on the Bremen Street. Then I see people come down there with two dogs, they throw their dog bags, and I add, I don't like it. And last week, I was walking up at the gate on Bremen Street, and this guy came flying down Rithel Street in Rocketland, came this close, it hit me, almost killed me. I was shaken. And I called the Auburn Police, what's his name? John?
John McClain?
Not John O'Brien, the other-
John McClain?
John McClain. He came down, he saw me shaking, I was crying to him. He goes, Jeff, what's the matter? I said, this guy came in, flying through Rithel Street with his dog, almost, came this close, hit me. And I'm shaken.
Yeah.
And I called the Auburn Police, I talked to, what's his name? The police chief, Nance Slukas, he told me, if that happens again, give me a call.
You should, yes.
I was shaken.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we'll make him aware of any comments.
Joe Frasco, 48 Rithel Street. Last meeting, and I forgot to mention this earlier, that I had left the packet here of the, a number of locations that was part of the presentation from the dog park committee. A lot of those had pictures, overview pictures, of where the dog park was to the other recreational areas. I would say five or six out of seven, the dog park was in quite a distance away from any other recreational area, probably for the reasons that were mentioned previously with the noise to spook the dogs, to say the least. Other things that I wanted to bring up was, there was a recommendation for the Upland location, Upland Street location, which got turned down due to a petition, I believe, to not have it in basically their backyard for noise, which we were basically saying the same thing, and that was allowed for theirs to remove that from consideration. As for Camp Gleason, I drove up there, looked at the site. Yes, it is, the topography is very poor, but if we are getting funding from Stanton to handle that type of building of the dog park, then I would think it'd be best that we have their dime pay for a parcel of land that we're not using. And I think it's been since 2013 that we've had no action since to have that land leased. And again, if we want to use land that's not being used, I think there's a suitable solution to this, where the dog park stays, I'm sorry, the skateboard park would stay where it is at, and we have a large area at Camp Gleason, which could serve both purposes. Again, dog park, Stanton grant could pay for that. There are hiking trails, granted. Thank you, Mr. Proudy, for pointing out that maybe residents of Rithel Street are the only dog users of the park. Then if that is the case, we should probably move a dog park to a different area of town so that other residents can use it as well. Thank you.
Anything else? So do board members have any questions or comments at this point? Mr. Cavinter?
I just want to thank everybody for coming, committee, again. I know you did a lot of work. I do want to point out, I did speak to Mr. Flash as well to get his ideas as to which age group we should be targeting. He actually said the middle school. What he bases it on, I wasn't able to follow up with him. So we have a lot of work to do, and what disturbs me when we have these meetings is anytime somebody opposes something, they're either, they're called a name, they're either told that they're a NIMBY, they're this, they're that. First of all, they're not. They're expressing their concerns, which should be respected, and we don't have to agree, but we should be civilized and civil to those people who have those concerns. There are a lot of questions. I've asked a lot of questions, and I think the board members got a lot of questions that I asked in their packet. So I have been working very diligently to try and understand this. I'm not anti-dog, I'm not anti-park, I'm not anti-anything. But what I am is a person who wants to know what I'm being asked to do and understand what the costs are going to be. We have some more definition of that now, which I appreciate. However, we're still not there, in my opinion. We still need a good couple of weeks to, for me at least, to continue to do research. Anywhere we put this, if we put it on Gleason, it's also a very established neighborhood, it's also a very confined and very busy neighborhood as well. No matter where we place this, it's going to be a problem. So I don't necessarily agree with, okay, well, it's 300 feet. Well, that's, you know, five houses. That's not a huge difference to your life, that you're going to sit there and say, it's 300 feet, so I'm not going to hear anything. So I understand your frustration with that. So, you know, wherever we put it, or if it gets somewhere, someone is going to be inconvenienced, someone is going to have their neighborhood affected. I don't think we can promise anybody that there isn't going to be some change. This is a good site from a geography point, because everybody is pretty much right in the center of town. There are some challenges to it. Obviously, you have expressed them very well. So, you know, I appreciate everybody for coming and sharing their opinion, and thank you.
Do members have anything else?
Yeah.
Mr. Holstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have some concerns tonight that I've heard, and I've spoken with members of the Rithel Street. One of the things I have a problem with is the Fur Friends with the percentage coming up. There should have been some talk. I understand that some of the questions were asked to donate some money. Well, they're not going to donate anything until they have something specific to stand on. I think pledges could be one of the things that they could look into and say, you know what? If you would pledge, if this comes about, then the pledge would be recognized and be able to receive the money. At least there would be a record, we'd know that something is coming in. And as Mr. Cavinter brought up, we don't know that for tonight, from this occasion, that some of the businesses don't want to put any money under something that we don't I am in favor of a dog park, but I am not in favor of the skate park being moved to a position closer to Rithel Street and to the neighbors at Bremen Street. I'd like to see that changed, and it seems as though the vote tonight, if we were to vote on it tonight, was, yeah, we're going to vote for a dog park, but now we have to take a look at the park, and where is it going to go? And we can't, and correct me if I'm wrong, the skateboard park, we have no funding for that right now. And if we have to change that, we have to go to town meeting to appropriate that money. So skateboard park is part of the vote to have a dog park, then, you know what, we're up in the air here tonight, because we can't do anything with a dog park if we haven't got the skate park to move. And do we want the skate park? Do we want to just get rid of it? I don't know. There's a lot of things we still have to ask, and I guess some of the things we want to take a look at. So again, I'm in favor of a dog park. Throw out there and say, you know, this is a vote, let's see if we get some answers. And again, pledges, they go along the way, pledge some money for a program. Okay, if it works, great. No loss, no gain. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holstrom. Mr. Berthew?
I'll just add, I am also in favor of a dog park, and I thought I was pretty much ready to vote tonight or to give my okay on it. But the more we hear about it, the more questions come up. One of the things that I didn't like was, I don't think anybody should be getting up here, and when somebody opposes a certain thing, be called a dog hater, okay? I personally, if a dog comes up to me, I have to basically stand there and let it come up to my legs and hope that it goes and lays down. Why? Because I'm allergic to dogs, okay? I am not a dog hater. So many people think that because, you know, you're standoffish or something like that. So let's get the whole idea of if somebody, you know, doesn't necessarily want a barking dog in their backyard, that they're a dog hater, okay? There's issues here, there's, I think, pretty much a full board that is willing to have a dog park put in if all the pieces fall in place, okay? The residents, I appreciate you coming from Rithel Street and Bremen and Oxford Street, it brought up a whole new set of concerns for us. You know, I didn't think I had them before I came here tonight. So, you know, we want to have it, or I should say, I want to have it. I will never own a dog, but I'm definitely for a dog park in town. I, you know, I've heard the pros and cons, and I think that it's a great thing. We have a leash law in town that gives people that want to, you know, put their dog off leash a place to, you know, go socialize and to go run. But I'm getting a little tired of the back and forth, so let's start with that, look at the issues, look at the facts, okay? And let's see if we can find a good place to have a dog park. As far as the Stanton grant, it's my understanding, through Madam Chair to the town manager, don't we have to guarantee that we have that money available when we apply for the grant?
Through the chair, there are two pieces to the Stanton grant that we do need to commit to. When we first apply for the design grant, which is the first stage, we have to submit a letter that states that we are committed to providing the 10% match. So we have to provide a letter committing to the 10% match. The second step is prior to the release of the Stanton Foundation's 90% construction funding, because the design is 100% paid for, the 90% construction funding will not be released to the town until a financial statement is provided to the Stanton Foundation that shows that the money is in the bank.
We're dealing with a chicken and egg thing here, and I think we just need to figure that out. I really, I have complete faith in the Fur Friends that you're going to come up with that kind of money. I'm not so worried about that. However, we have to have a way to guarantee the town and the residents of the town that here's what's going to happen. Step one, this date. Step two, this date, okay? It has to happen. So don't think that we're up here just trying to buck the system. We want this to happen, but things have to happen in place. And as far as I'm concerned at this point, if it takes another three, four months, meetings, whatever it is, until we do what's right for the town, that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, it sounds like we have a lot of information here that we have to take in the process, and we have some more questions. So I'd like to continue this, and I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until June 26, where we put some more information together and make this happen so we can have all the answers that we need. I don't like putting anything off. I'd like to get and make a decision, but with tonight, as Mr. mentioned, I agree with him, that we've still got a few things to look at before we can do, have a slam dunk, and it's, let's take a look at it. I'm sure we are on the right page, and so June 26, I'd like to continue this hearing.
Okay. Just, excuse me, Mr. Cavinter, one minute, please. You made a motion to continue the hearing. It's not a hearing, so to continue the dog park issue to June 26. Is there a second for discussion?
I'll make a second for discussion.
Okay, is there discussion?
Yes, I would ask that we hold it to July. We have one meeting that gives us several weeks. We have several questions. I think it would be helpful to have additional time. July is the date that I would like us to hold this to, and I'm not committing to making a decision in July. I want to see where these answers come from and where they lead us. There may be more questions based on what we hear. So I can't commit to saying on July, whatever date we're meeting, we're going to have a vote. I'm not going to say that I'm going to be ready in July to say, this is it, this is where we're going to put it, you know? So I would just ask Mr. Holstrom if he'd consider that to amend his motion to July.
Under discussion, I'll support the continuing this till July, I'm sorry, June 26. I think that there's been enough issues raised. My biggest concern is this petition being presented to us this afternoon. I want to get more information as to, you know, who originated this petition, what information was sent out for this petition. I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with continuing this matter until June 26. And then again, if members still don't feel they have enough information, they continue at that point. But I think that we have enough information, enough questions that were raised tonight and some information that we certainly can address some of that on June 26.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to stay with my original data, June 26.
I'm going to withdraw my second. Someone else can second it.
Is there a second on the June 26? Masilla Liberty, a second on the continuing this to June 26. We're under discussion. Mr. Berthew?
I'm fine with the motion, but I do agree that with Mr. Cavinter, that we probably will need more time, so I don't want anyone's hopes up that within a week and a half or two weeks, we're going to get a lot of these things answered. So I have no problem with it being on the agenda for the June 26, but likely, in my mind anyway, it may get extended. You know, I just want people to know that. Thank you.
And under discussion, Mr. Chairman, although you are certainly welcomed, I don't think that we're going to ask you to call another joint meeting with us. If we have questions, we'll send them to you, and you're always welcome at our meetings, but we're certainly not going to ask you to call another joint meeting. You've provided us with excellent information, and thank you. Is there anything further on the motion? All those in favor of continuing this to June 26?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So I just want to make a statement before we just take a brief recess. Just, we've received an email, a couple of emails, and a comment was made tonight, and I just, I just feel personally that it's important to make this statement. Somebody wrote to us saying that we were putting dogs over our police offices. I want to ensure the residents that, first of all, the Stanton Foundation, if we apply for this grant, as was indicated in a couple emails, we cannot take Stanton Foundation money for- money for a dog park and put it to our, and dedicate it to our police officers. We, as a board, have supported funding our police department to the max that we can. We've supported hiring new police officers. We've talked to the town manager. We have applied for, I don't even know the number, but hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant money. I don't want anyone to leave here tonight or anyone who's watching to believe that we are putting a dog park before our police officers. They are two separate issues, both evaluated, but because we had this horrible tragedy that we've just celebrated, the one-year anniversary, please don't tie the two in. We value our police officers. The money from the Stanton Foundation cannot be used to fund our police department. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recess for five minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. The next item on our agenda is under presentations. It's a recommendation for disposal of Mary D. Stone and Julia Bancroft schools. And we have the chairman here of the committee and, if you'd like, and Mr. Stensel, a member of the committee as well. Mr. Kennedy, welcome.
Thank you.
If you'd like to give us...
Through the chair, do you want us to give the presentation first so the public will know what we're talking about?
Sure, sure. I didn't know who was doing the presentation, so...
The town manager has, hopefully she...
The town manager's going to do the presentation and you're here for any questions and comments.
Yes, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. And thank you again to the chair of the advisory group as well as Mr. Stensel, both members, for your patience. Every item's important and we have to make sure we give the residents the time that they need. So I appreciate you coming in and waiting patiently for this. Tonight, we're here to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for the disposition of both the Mary D. Stone and the Julia Bancroft school properties. I just want to quickly run through the disposition process timeline, just as a reminder to everyone and those of you who may not be aware of it. So in January of 2015, we appointed an elementary school reuse and disposition advisory group. And I should mention for members of the Board of Selectmen, we do have copies of this presentation before you, so I know it can be difficult to read, especially this. From February 15 to May of 15, the advisory group, they toured both facilities, they examined the site profiles, they assessed interdepartmental and townwide needs, and they evaluated the various zoning options, and they solicited public feedback through a series of public meetings. In May, the advisory group recommended to the town administration that we have, they preferred senior or over 55 housing for Julia Bancroft, and at that time, a town hall annex or use for Mary D. Stone. In both cases, the committee advised and recommended the preservation of the athletic fields as well as the so-called historic facades. And I say so-called because technically, they're not historic, they're not on the register, but they are historic to Auburn. In following that, we, town administration, secured the services of an architect who looked at the architecture, the building code, the engineering, and potential construction costs to try to make an independent assessment as to what the cost would be to the town to use Mary D. Stone for town use. And that study came back, as you know, and showed that the cost could be anywhere from a minute $400,000 just for, basically for storage. We would not be able to use any public spaces. And it could go up to maybe 1.6 million or higher for use by the town. So we went back to the advisory group with that, those findings, and the advisory group considered that and took a different vote in, let's see, in February of 16, after getting that information. And they voted to change the recommendation from, for the Mary D. Stone School to senior and over 55 housing. So basically, they, at that point, had recommended senior and/or over 55 housing for both sites. Last summer, the Board of Selectmen received information on this. We had, you scheduled a meeting and held a public hearing for public comment in September. I believe the first, it was first presented in July, and you, again, took a vote on it in September, and you talked about it for a couple of months, giving the public the opportunity to submit comment. On February 24th, we issued RFPs for both properties for either lease or sale. On March 16th, we held a walkthrough. We held another one in April. The proposals were due to the town on May 8th. We then took the, we opened the non-price proposals to determine whether they were qualified proposals, when we realized all three that we received, two for Mary D. and one for Julia Bancroft, were so-called qualified proposals based on the criteria and the RFP. We brought the proposals to the elementary advisory group for their review and to get their input per the request of the Board of Selectmen and per our commitment to the advisory group to keep them in the process. It's been a great group and they've put a lot of time and effort into this, and we felt that we really valued their recommendations. On May 23rd, they met and they reviewed those proposals and they made a recommendation to town administration, which I'll get to in a minute. On May 30th, following all of that, the price proposals were opened. That is because in a case of an RFP, as we discussed before we issued it, the sole criteria is not the price. The criteria is what's in the RFP as far as preference and what's best for the community and what the priorities are that the board and the advisory group established. The price comes in as a factor, but not a determining factor. Therefore, recommendations are supposed to be made by the highest and best use prior to opening the price proposals. Once the price proposals are opened, town administration went back and looked at and evaluated the proposals to see if the price changed the recommendation at all, which it did not. So with the RFP process, again, we put out the RFP in February. We identified developers that had experience in redeveloping similar properties. We identified developers that had experience in housing, since the advisory committee and town administration concurred that housing would be our highest priority use. We identified a number of firms that we sent it to, and we also sent it to individuals that requested a copy of the RFP. So we sent it to a total of 12 individuals and firms, and we received three bids back. The recommendation for the proposed use, again, the advisory group had recommended and we concurred, to put a, an RFP out to solicit, our request for proposals to solicit bids, preferably as housing for seniors or those over 55, while allowing for other creative proposals to be submitted for uses that potentially would have a community benefit and would not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. Again, the advisory group and we concurred, recommended the preservation of the facade of the original buildings and to preserve the playground as town-owned, the playground and surrounding fields as town-owned. So I'm just quickly going to bring you through the proposals we received. Two proposals for Mary D. Stone School, one from Penrose Properties LLC and one from North Village Lofts LLC. The Penrose Property LLC is, Penrose Properties, first of all, is a private full-service real estate firm. They're nationally known. They've done projects in 12 states. They've done 220 development projects. They are, have responsible for developing and managing over 15,000 rental housing units. Charlie Adams, who actually is here this evening, came to watch. Charlie, and I've actually just, you know, this is the first time I've met Charlie, so I've seen his proposal, so welcome and nice to meet you. Charlie has over 20 years of experience in developing and financing affordable and mixed-income housing, and Charlie would be the point person that Penrose Development, excuse me, Penrose Property puts on this development project. The proposal that we received from Penrose Property was for 55 one- and two-bedroom units of high-quality senior housing. Eight of those units would be market rate, with the remainder marketed to seniors or 55 and over at below 60% AMI, which is average median income. And the proposal called for 47 one-bedroom units, five of which would be market rate, and eight two-bedroom units, three of which would be market rate. The proposal preserves the historic facade and a portion of the original building while creating new housing for seniors. The development pro forma estimates the total development cost to be $17,507,528, or roughly $17.5 million. The proposed design would renovate the historic part of the school while demolishing the latter addition and replacing it with a new four-story structure that would mirror the height of the existing building that we have today. Additional amenities in the proposal were to include community rooms and meeting spaces for resident meetings and events, which would be handicapped accessible. When available, Penrose has offered the town at no cost to use the meeting space, or the community space in the Mary D. Stone School, which would be wonderful, having it right next door. The developer also initiated conversations with the WRTA to potentially coordinate an extended paratransit service for their senior residents. They have talked about wraparound services and working with the Council on Aging and other senior providers to make sure that the residents who live there would have full access to senior services in the community. And the developer also offered to provide the town with resources to improve and maintain the playground. I just want to show you a couple of the photos of actually schematic designs. This is what the outside would look like of the Mary D. Stone. I won't go through every one, but they did provide to us the Level 1 schematic plan, the Level 2, Level 3, which right now, the building, it has split levels. So when you look at it, part of Mary D. has four, some of it has two. There's a large space in the middle. It's a very interesting layout. So this mirrors the outside, but the inside would be considerably different, and this would be, a good part of it would be a new section. Also, they showed Level 4, and then they showed what they would do with the basement level. The proposed timeline, I won't take you through all of this, but I think I would just summarize it by saying, under this, we would, Penrose Properties has proposed to close on the property in December of 18. That would be following the ability to secure all of the state funding that they need to make this project happen. Again, this is a senior affordable housing project that sets the rates based on state guidelines and is reliant upon funding from the state to develop the project. I should mention that affordable housing projects in Massachusetts, it is not economical to put those projects or develop those projects without incentives from the state. So these are incentives that are given to the developer, which allows the developer to build the property and to build the units, and then to lease them at the rate that the state requires to be leased at. And again, this would be for senior housing. North Village Lofts was the second proposal we received. Daniel Stroh and Timothy Adler are working together, put together a proposal for us. Separately, they each have extensive experience in real estate development and some real estate investment and some redevelopment projects. Together, this would be their second project. The first one was expected to close last month in Worcester at the former Indian Hill School, and that would be getting underway shortly. The proposal that we were provided by North Village Lofts was for 20 to 25 rental units, and these would be apartments that were targeted at a young professional market. It was anticipated that maybe 18 to 20 would be one-bedroom units and four to five would be studio apartments, although the developer and the proposal said that they would get into the details of that as they move forward in the process and got into the architect and engineering. The development pro forma projected a total budget of $1.85 million. They did provide a conceptual layout that you see here for the building and a conceptual layout of one of the potential units. Their timeline likewise was to, was, would probably get this through in about a little over two years and maybe three months. And the closing would be predicated upon finalizing all their permits and local approvals and other obvious things that we do need to finalize before we move forward on any of the projects. So after we did all that, we determined that the Penrose Property was by far the higher, what we call the highly advantageous proposal based on the criteria and the RFP. And then we moved on to the price proposals. Those had been sealed. They were advertised as being opened publicly on a specific date in our office, which was May 30th. And when we opened the proposals, Penrose Properties had offered a purchase price for the Mary D. Stone School of $50,000. They also offered to provide the town with $25,000 toward the upgrade or improvement of the playground slash field area behind it, that the town would be retaining ownership of. And they would be providing legal and consulting funding to the town, up to $25,000, to offset the cost of the transfer of the deed. Any types of surveys, legal funding, any other consultant fees that we may incur, up to $25,000, for a total package price of $100,000. North Village Lofts proposed a purchase price of $275,000. After going back and determining all the criteria that we looked at and why we wanted to recommend Penrose Properties, opening the price bids did not change that recommendation. And I should say, and I know the advisory group would probably speak to this too, but we did have that discussion in the meeting and said, if we were to get a price proposal that was significantly different one way or the other, would this affect your decision? And the advisory group said it would not affect the decision. The decision is based on the criteria and the RFP, not the price. So therefore, I just want to summarize the recommendation for the disposition of Mary D. Stone would be to provide the award, award the bid to Penrose Properties LLC. It's a highly advantageous proposal. It provides must-needed senior housing as well as senior affordable housing. Because the senior affordable housing, it meets the state criteria, it would boost the town's affordable housing inventory, which is significantly lower than it should be. It's around the 3.5% range, and it needs to be ultimately at 10%. It retains a beautiful facade. It generates new tax revenues as well as new growth. It will provide meeting space, when available, to the town at no cost. It will provide the town with the financial resources to improve the playground area, $25,000. Provides $25,000 to offset legal and consulting costs. And Penrose is an experienced developer with extensive housing property management portfolio nationally. Moving quickly to Julia Bancroft. We received one proposal for Julia Bancroft from Penrose Properties, the same Penrose Properties that I just mentioned for Mary D. Stone. Again, this would be a proposal for senior housing, 55 units of high-quality senior housing, studios, one- and two-bedroom units. Eight of the units would be at market rate, with the remainder marketed to seniors at or below 60% AMI. There would be one studio unit, 44 one-bedroom units, four, five of which are market rate, and 10 two-bedroom units, three of which are market rate. This would preserve the historic facade and a portion of the original building while creating new housing to meet seniors' needs. The development pro forma estimates the total development cost of this property at $17,94117, or nearly $18 million. The proposed structure would renovate the historic school while demolishing the later addition and replacing it with a new three-story structure, again, similar to the structure height that is there right now. The buildings, additional amenities, the buildings here as well as Mary D. would include community rooms and amenity spaces for resident meetings and events, which would be handicapped accessible and, again, available to the town at no cost if and when there was availability in the spaces. The developer, again, initiated conversations with the Worcester Regional Transit Authority to discuss specific paratransit service for the residents. The developer plans to provide the town with financial resources, $25,000 for the field and the same $25,000, again, for the consulting and legal fees that are tied into the closing and the deed transfer. The schematic design outside for Julia Bancroft, again, a very attractive building. Penrose provided the Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3 schematic designs for each four, excuse me, as well as, excuse me, Level 4. And I will mention, although it's not a consideration, in the proposal, there was a Phase 2 proposed that we're not considering now because we did not put out to bid for a Phase 2, but there is a potential, if we like the development and the town was interested, we could go back out to bid and potentially do a Phase 2 down the road. That is not under consideration right now. Timeline is the same as the Mary D. Stone School. However, it was noted in both proposals, if they were chosen for both properties, they would have to work with the town to come up with a realistic timeline, because to do both properties at the exact same time probably wouldn't work so well. So we need to stagger the timing on it. So that all gets done during the master development agreement process, which would follow the vote to award the bid. The price proposals were then opened after the determination was made that this was a very highly advantageous proposal. The purchase price, similar to Mary D. Stone, $50,000. $25,000 for the playground, $25,000 for legal and consulting, for a total package of $100,000. Excuse me, the advisory group, I just hit that too fast, but the advisory group likewise at their meeting on May 23rd voted to recommend that we... at their meeting on May 23 voted to recommend that we award the bid to Penrose Properties. Town administration, myself, we concur completely with that recommendation. Again, very similar to the Mary D. Stone School, exact same reasons that we are making that recommendation to you tonight. It's a highly advantageous proposal in terms of the criteria of the RFP. It provides senior housing, it provides senior affordable housing, it boosts our affordable housing inventory, it retains the facade, it generates new tax revenues and growth, it provides meeting space for the town, it provides financial resources to maintain the field and the playground, it provides financial resources for the transfer of the deed. And again, Penrose is an experienced developer with extensive housing property management portfolio. So the next steps this evening, the Board of Selectmen, we are asking you to respectfully consider a vote on each property. You have the votes in your packet, so I won't read them, but basically, the summary is that the vote would be to accept our recommendation to award the bid to Penrose Properties and to authorize the town manager to take any and all actions associated with that to move this process along. There would be two separate votes, one for each school. Following that, the next steps, and this is the last piece of this, next steps, assuming and if the board votes this evening to accept the recommendation, we would work with Town Council Henigan and the developer to create the master development agreement, where a lot of the details of this get worked out and solidified and put in writing. The town would, at some point in the very near future, initiate an application for an A&R, which is basically the mechanism that we need to use to split off the playground field space from the parcel that we're selling to the developer. And then we would work together on the Chapter 40B application process for comprehensive housing permit with the developer. A so-called friendly 40B, 40B is 40B. It is still a process that is dictated by law in which the developer goes through the Zoning Board of Appeals, and there was a public process, and we would be working with the developer to get through that process. So thank you very much, and I know we're going to turn it over to Kevin and Chet to save a few comments, and then we can answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I think the town manager obviously certainly covered the project in detail. Just to say, it's been two and a half years since, it was hard to believe when you saw the timeline, two and a half years since our advisory group was put together. It was representative of selection of the community boards, school committee, selectmen, Board of Selectmen. Matt Benoit, as the town planner, kind of led us through this process and was a great deal of help, as well as having representation from both areas. Mr. Stensel's in the Julia Bancroft side of town and others in the Mary D. side of town. And we came to our role, you know, from the heart, similar to the large group you had here earlier, that is very passionate about their cause. We came here because we have great feelings for the Mary D. Stone, as well as the surrounding area and our concerns, as well as the Julia Bancroft School and concerns for those properties. After, as the town manager said, you know, extensively looking at the buildings, seeing what our options were, probably most importantly, taking some citizen input. The common theme that we heard from the community was folks from, from people that lived across the street to people that just drove by it, that they wanted to maintain those facades, the historic, even though they're not on the register, to us that live in town, those are historic buildings, and the front of those buildings mean a lot to us, because a lot of us have sent our children to those schools and families have gone to those schools. They wanted the front of those buildings maintained. They, surprisingly, you think of schools that the playgrounds primarily are for school kids, and when the school kids are gone, they're not utilized, but we heard from plenty of folks that, from the neighborhoods, that use that as their backyards, that come over and play. We know we have town sports that utilize the fields. So there was quite a bit of concern to maintain the recreational space. And then there was also quite an input, you know, the Housing Authority is very beneficial in discussing the need for more senior housing within the town of Auburn. So those three main components were what we were hoping for. We had thought initially that town hall, additional town hall space, based on the proximity of the town hall, would be beneficial, but we quickly found that in the odd architecture of design of Mary D. with different levels and stuff, and how would there be elevators, how could we get it up to code for handicap accessibility and whatnot, it was going to be cost prohibitive. So we went out to, sent these, the RFPs out, and the other day when we sat down to open them, I think the committee, the advisory group, was very, very excited with what we saw, that there were folks that were interested in bringing their developments to the town. But certainly, the Penrose Properties far exceeded our expectations for what we would see, get from them. Things like the community rooms and access to more meeting space was just a bonus. The fact that they're willing to upgrade the playground's a huge bonus. And just aesthetically, you know, you look at the two designs, the renderings that were put up there, they're beautiful buildings. I think they're going to bring to us those development opportunities through Penrose, if they're, the select, the selectmen chooses to go forward with it, are going to bring us everything we had hoped for and more.
No, I really don't have anything to add. Kevin covered everything.
Right, thank you. Do the board members have any questions or comments? Mr. Cappen?
Just a quick question. There's such a lag in between this vote and when the title actually passes, what happens? What happens to the property? Do we keep responsibility for it? Do they pay taxes on it if they take responsibility for it? You know, I think a lot of people have questions as to what's going to happen with the building, because there's already been vandalism over here. So people have concerns as to what's going to happen, especially now we're looking at an 18-month window.
Through the chair, the master development agreement identifies all of the terms and conditions of the transfer of the property between now and the time the property transfers. So those items are to be negotiated with the developer. But I can tell you that it remains in the town's hands until the transfer. So the ownership legally is still the town's until the transfer of the property. That being said, I will assume that the developer wants to make sure that the property is maintained and that we would be working together with them to ensure that. They don't want to see that building fall into any further disrepair either. So those are the types of things that get worked out in a master development agreement.
Anything else, Mr. Cappen?
No, thank you.
Do any other members have any comments right now? Mr. Holstrom.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. And through the chair to Ms. Jacobson. When I reviewed the proposals, and I think, you know, I'm going to say that there was a significantly expanded and improved proposal than the opposing one, and I would go, I'm very much 110% in favor of this. I did see part of, in there, that there was a 30-year proposal that it would be maintained as housing for elderly housing. Is that, am I seeing that properly, that it's going to be just for only 30 years, and then after 30 years, anything can happen?
Yes and no. The reality is that the state requires that any affordable units be retained for a minimum of 30 years. Many of the new development projects statewide are actually in perpetuity, but there is a minimum requirement of 30 years. That being said, we would be working with the developer and can certainly put deed restrictions on the property to be in keeping with the RFP. The RFP proposed senior housing, we're not, the RFP didn't propose senior housing, we weren't seeking it for only 30 years, we were seeking it in perpetuity. That being said, Town Council has also said that at a certain point, and he believes it might even be 50 years, you cannot legally hold anyone responsible beyond that, and he would be looking into that. So whatever the requirements are under Mass. General Law, we would be working with the developer to ensure that it would be senior housing. I can tell you that we did talk to the developer, and the developer indicated that they have no desire to have anything other than senior housing. That's what their proposal is, that's what they responded to, and that's what we all expect will be there.
Thank you. Definitely a great proposal, and I would go along with the recommendation. I know that $275,000 was offered to us for the building, but I think, as Mr. Kennedy had mentioned, it's a bonus for us, for them to look at the legal fees and whatever paperwork is going to be done that way. For us to be able to use community rooms and have some access to the building for town use, definitely a plus. And then also, again, for the playgrounds, and my understanding was that they want to improve these playgrounds, it will add to the value of their property, you know, in just, you know, what it looks like. It would be more appreciable for them. I think that, yeah, it's definitely a go-go for everything. So the $50,000 price tag, yes, it's lower than 275, but for what we would get for it, it's definitely well worth the price, and I think we should definitely go forward with that, those recommendations proposed tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom. Mr. Bertheum.
First of all, I think the design is incredible, the use is incredible. One of the things that I'd like to find out, and I know we can't guarantee Auburn seniors, you know, first dibs or anything like that, but is there, is there any advantage that Auburn residents are going to get as to, you know, having the ability to utilize these spaces before the developer goes out to outside applicants?
Through the chair, under the state housing programs that the developer's applying for, there has to be a lottery for the first-time tenants of any of these properties. It's chosen by lottery to avoid any type of preferential treatment. That being said, in some cases, the state, and it has to be done with state approval, has approved of a potential preference for residents of a community to maybe have first preference, at least as far as getting into that lottery, but it's rarely done, because the funds come from the state, not from the locals. So it's state fund, so it's hard to restrict it to just Auburn residents. We will look into that, and we would talk to the developer and see if they're interested, but we cannot require it.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? So any public comments? If you can just come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Can I shut this thing?
Sure. And you can pull the microphone down a little, so.
I don't do computers, so I hope I didn't destroy it. My name is Pauline Morice. I live at 14 Vinyl Street, which is a neighbor to 3 Vinyl Street. I've been there since 1968, and I've been, I've seen a lot of comings and goings in the day. And I welcome the developers that are coming in. It sounds like it's going to be a good match for Auburn. In units, I think somebody said there's going to be 55 units, or is that 55?
I believe so, yeah.
All right, it doesn't really matter, but it's 55 and over.
No, it's 55 units and it's senior for 55 and over?
Over. It's 55 and older for seniors. Parking, if you have one bedroom, two bedrooms, and you know we all need a vehicle, whether we use it or not, I'm concerned about the parking area. You know, it's going to need more parking. I'm not sure the amount of cars that JB can handle at this point in time, but I'm assuming it's going to need more parking space, and it will be designed such as. Landscape, I'm, as a neighbor, I'm concerned on the landscape, what they're going to put in, and I'm sure it's going to be very beautiful. It's going to be a lot, for the neighborhood, it's going to be wonderful. Smoking is a big issue with me. Is this, and it's my understanding that senior housing should not have smoking in the building. Is that, yes or no?
This, this does not fall under the authority of the housing authority.
Okay.
So, so the same, it's private, so the same rules would not apply.
But my point is, with the beautiful landscaping, and you know, people with cigarettes, off they go, you know, with, the school even there, the parents, whatever, it's unpleasant to see cigarettes, and for the kids. You know, at some point in time, I'd like to know when they're starting and when the estimated time of completion, you know, for the dust and everything happening. I'd like to see Julia Bancroft's name in the building, if it's possible somehow, you know. Obviously, this building was named for Julia Bancroft, and maybe we could keep that, or they could. I'm not really sure. But I have to confess to one of my little sins. 10 years ago, I took a little twig sapling from JB, picking up some of the grandchildren after school, and I just plucked it out and I put it in a bucket, and my husband planted it in the backyard. Well, Julia B. today is probably 20 feet high, she gives a beautiful shade. So, you know, I think the name is appropriate for the neighborhood. So if the name doesn't stay, we have a tree in the neighborhood, Julia B. is her name. If you've come in and out of Julia Bancroft, it's one way in, and it's the same way out. When you come out of Vinyl Street and you're crossing over to Pinehurst to take a right, or crossing over, excuse me, crossing over Oxford Street and taking the left, it's quite the entertainment on occasion there. Mostly out-of-towners, they'll come in off of Pinehurst, no, excuse me, they come in off from Oxford Street, and there is a solid line crossing over to either Pinehurst to the right or Oxford Street on the left. Out-of-towners are on the left side, they cross the solid strip, and they're there. So cars coming in and coming around, coming into Julia Bancroft or going up Oxford Street, it's quite entertaining. And I mail letters when the school comes and goes and there's a lot of traffic, and I just sit out there and I observe. I haven't seen any fender benders to date, but I can't believe it hasn't happened. If the town could look at that area and maybe have a two-lane coming off of Vinyl, either taking the right on Oxford or crossing over and taking the right on Pinehurst, I think it could be safer. And the other side is very wide, where it doesn't really probably need to be that wide, but I am not the powers that be. I'm sure the town could figure that one out better than me. That's probably it for now, right now, but I welcome this happening. It needs to be, and I'm looking forward to being neighbors with the seniors and the property owner. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mrs. Morice, for your comments. I know that, especially you and people in your neighborhood, take great pride in their properties, have followed this closely, you know, and to have Inabutter come in and, you know, to, to give its blessing to this project, we've put a lot into it. I mean, I did the double take, looking back at how long they've been working on this project. Mrs. Jacobson is going to address a couple of the issues you raised. This is a process, and as you heard, the developer, it's not appropriate for us to ask him questions in the RFP process, but he's hearing your comments, and I'm sure he'd be happy to have a conversation with you to hear about the neighborhood. So, but Mrs. Jacobson is going to answer a couple of your comments.
Certainly. Thank you, and thank you again for your comments. Always want to hear the input for the residents, it's much appreciated. The, again, I just want to reiterate, this would be a private development project, so as Mrs. Goodrich stated, it's not public housing, so the rules and regulations that apply to public housing don't apply to the private project. There will be rules and regulations and restrictions placed on it by the funding source, and that's the affordable housing component. This is what you call a 40B comprehensive permit process, which means the developer will be going through the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the Zoting Board of Appeals can look at and ask questions and help frame the parking and the landscaping and things like that. That process follows Mass. General Law with regard to comprehensive permits, so that will take place at a later date. On the construction schedule, right now, it is a preliminary estimate here, so I can't tell you right now which building would be going first, Mary D. or Julia Bancroft. We would be working with the developer on coming up with that schedule. But the process is approximately two, about two years and, two and a half years from start to completion, whenever that start date may be. If Julia Bancroft were to start first, the estimated completion date would be December of 19 for the construction, and then the lease-up would take place immediately thereafter. That is the same schedule proposed for Mary D., but we would be working with the developer to see if that schedule would be changed for either property, given the fact that they are applying for both. And then, lastly, some of the, some of the other issues that you brought up, again, would take place during the comprehensive permit process. So, thank you.
Does anyone have anything else?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the Mary D. Stone School. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Mark just raised his hand. I'm sorry.
Mr. Benal, have a question.
Mr. Stensel's going to. Mr. Stensel, could you raise that microphone, please? Mr. Stensel, could you raise that microphone, please?
Okay, bye. All right, okay. Marco, Warfield Street. Just let the developer know that the town's representative to the Western Regional Transit Authority, so if you think I can do it to help them, let me know.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Benham.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please.
I move that the Board of Selectmen adopt the recommendation of the town manager to sell the town-owned building and land known as the former Mary D. Stone School located at 10 Church Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, to Penrose Properties LLC pursuant to the terms of the proposal submitted by Penrose Properties LLC to the Town of Auburn on or about May 8, 2017, and to authorize the town manager to take any and all actions and/or to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to effectuate said sale.
Is there a second?
Second.
Still a liberty to second the motion? Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Is there a second motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Berthew.
I move that the Board of Selectmen adopt the recommendation of the town manager to sell the town-owned building known as the former Julia Bancroft School located at 3 Vinyl Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, to Penrose Properties LLC pursuant to the terms of the proposal submitted by Penrose Properties LLC to the Town of Auburn on or about May 8, 2017, and to authorize the town manager to take any and all actions and/or to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to effectuate said sale.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holstrom, second the motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? It's a unanimous vote. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you could extend our thanks to your committee
I will.
for the work they did, and thank you for being here tonight.
Through the chair, thank you very much, and I also want to echo our thanks to the advisory group, to the chair, and to all the members. They did a great, great job. They were huge, enormous help to us, so thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a change of manager. Century Sportsman's Club, is there a representative here? Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to open the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is open. Good evening, and thank you for your patience in waiting. We have a big agenda tonight.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Brothers, and I live at 161 White Birch Street in Leicester, Mass.
And we have some paperwork in front of us. Could you just tell us a little bit about your proposal and what your role will be?
Well, our current manager wishes to resign, so I'm going to take his place, if it's okay.
And do you have any experience in bar management?
No.
No, but do you understand tip certification, the requirements that everyone who's serving alcohol be tip certified?
Yes, they are currently. I am also.
Okay, and how many serve alcohol at the Century Sportsman's Club?
Right now, we have, counting myself, there would be about five of us that do it, and we have maybe four or five other people who are tip certified but do not serve at this time.
Do members have questions? Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Brothers, how much activity is there actually at Century Sportsman? Is it an active location? Are there many members? And what kind of activity do you have while the building's open?
Well, as far as the bar goes?
Yes.
As far as the bar goes, we rent the hall, and most of the time, I'd say 75% of the time, we don't serve alcohol, but when they request to have alcohol served, we get a bartender and we set up the bar for them.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else? Is there anyone who wanted to comment on?
We also serve it at the meetings also, which are monthly.
Is there anything else? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding the application?
I make a motion we approve the change of manager for the Century Sportsman's Club.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you for your patience, and good luck in your new position.
Thank you also.
We have no communications. The next items are Board of Selectmen general items. We have a transient vendor license for Big Dogs. Is there applicant here? If you could come up and just give your name for the record, please?
Sharon Rabado.
Whoops.
Sharon Rabado.
Okay. And we have some paperwork in our packet. Can you just tell us a little bit about what you're going to do?
When it's not at events, we'd like to just place it at, place the business and serve sausage, hamburg, hot dogs, chips, and soda. Customers, they come down, and they, most of them not come down, skip their lunches, go on their breaks, and...
Can you just lift that microphone? I'm just having a little hard time hearing you. There you go.
There you go.
That should help. Did any members have?
I didn't hear a word she said.
You didn't hear a word. Can you try?
It's just to serve our customers.
Mrs. Rabado, could you come up here? And I think this microphone will work a little better for us. The air conditioner is blowing your voice. Mr. Berthew didn't hear what you had said your proposal was?
Just would not be used at events to be able to serve our customers. The majority of them, when they come down for stickers, skipping their lunches, coming during their breaks, and...
Mr. Berthew, did you have a follow-up question?
Uh, no.
Okay, Mr. Holstrom?
Good evening, Mrs. Rabado. Through the chair. And this Big Dogs is a, it's a food truck?
It's a mobile food truck.
It's a mobile food truck, and it's only going to be at the location
And events.
on Mill Terrace. You're not going to be going to different customers around town or driving around town with this. It'll be strictly for that one location?
And special events.
And for special events?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
With a transient vendor license, they are allowed to go from location to location. They just need to be in contact with the Board of Health, so the Board of Health is aware of where they're serving. So, their requirements fall under the Board of Health. Mr. Berthew.
Just, what type of events are you doing now? What's your...
We actually, we just got it. We haven't done much now. I believe he put in to set up for the Fourth of July in Auburn. He went through, you know, he put in the application for that. Then there's also the Casa Summer, and just different events.
So, through the chair, so you just bought this food truck from somebody else?
Yeah, we recently...
Oh, and did you know that person that you bought it from?
I'm not sure if he did or not.
Okay, I just didn't know if, I haven't really heard of this Big Dogs, and I didn't know whether they did local...
No, it's, no, it's not.
Oh, it's totally...
Yeah. It's known that way, yes.
Okay.
And we have in our packet the memorandum from the DCG, and as I stated, you know, this falls under the Board of Health, so they need to be serve-safe and Alogent certified. They need to obtain all necessary permits and inspections from town departments, boards, and commissions, most notably the Board of Health, and the applicant shall ensure that the trailer will not be parked within any public or private right-of-way at any time.
So, I guess, through the chair, is it going to be a trailer, or is it going to actually be like a coffee truck?
It's an enclosed trailer.
It's going to be a trailer?
I believe there's pictures in there.
No, we have got a picture of it here. So, it's going to be, it's going to be a trailer and not a truck?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we have a photo here.
Great. Ah, okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Cappington?
Just a quick question, because I know that this is kind of a very undeveloped area, and the pathway to it, I know, was subject to some controversy, but it is not a paved road, is it? It's been a while since I've been down there.
Um, I mean, they've played...
It's half and half.
Yeah, it's like asphalt, it's not...
I don't know if Mr. Coyle would know the width of the road. My concern with the location is where it is, to be honest with you, so...
Where it's going to be positioned as paved?
Well, just people, access to that site is very tough, and to direct more traffic down...
I'm not looking to direct more. It's more for our customers. I'm not looking to put up signs and have people come down, and it's not like that. It's just the kind of service our customers that already do come down.
Okay.
I'm not expecting the general public to really, I mean, there's plenty of restaurants for that.
I think you might be surprised. Through the chair, if we can ask Mr. Coyle if he would address at least the width of the road and the condition of the road.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bill Coyle, DPD Director. The condition of the road, it is a town road. It consists of asphalt grindings. It's not, wasn't paved with hot top, although I will say, during the summer months, when it heats up with the traffic, it does pack down some of that asphalt. I've never had any issues or complaints about traffic, two-way traffic going through that area. I would only be guessing what the width would be. I would, if I were to venture a guess, I'd say probably somewhere around 18 feet in width, but I can't say that I've had any calls or concerns about the width being too narrow in that area.
I'll just, I'll just let board members know that this is on an existing business, that they'll be using this, and one of the conditions in the proposed motion would be that it's not parked on the right-of-way or on public way, so it's on their own, and like any other vehicle on your property, it can't be parked on the grassy area. It has to be parked on a paved surface. Are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion regarding the application?
I make a motion approve the license provided all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its department, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So, it's four to one. Good luck.
Thank you.
And thank you for waiting. So, it's been a long night. If we could take number 6A and number 6B out of order, as we have people here. Is there a motion to move those items up?
I make a motion we move up 6A and 6B.
Second.
I'm sorry, was there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Just so you know, you're welcome to stay, but your license is all set, and you've, it's been a long night. Oh, okay, you're welcome to stay. So, we've moved up town manager items A and B. Mrs. Jacobson?
Thank you. Through the chair. So, item 6A, we'll start with that, is a vote to authorize the application for 2017 Mass DEP grant and accept funds, and Amy Sullivan is here to speak to that item. Darlene Coyle, our Public Health Director, is here as well.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. So, as we have done in years past, we are applying for some funding for this grant. It's called recycling dividends, so it's points awarded for certain things that we're doing in town to maximize reuse, recycling, and maximize waste reduction. So, this year, with the program we have in place and different things that we've done, including the limit on trash disposal, which is 64 gallons a week, our yard waste drop-off site for composting, and access to the Leicester Recycling Center, I just wanted to mention that because it is a part of why we're getting this money, because non-residents can go to Leicester and get a sticker, because we're adjacent, and they accept a lot of hard-to-dispose of and hard-to-recycle items there. So, Auburn residents can go to the Leicester Recycling Center. And also, this year, there was a bonus point for promoting textiles recycling. So, we just published an article last week in the Auburn Mass Daily, and there's a link on our website to some textile information, so that was how we got the points to be, to qualify, to be eligible for this grant, and we should be able to get $8,800 this year. So, we just need approval from the board to apply for the grant. Of course, the deadline is Wednesday, so that's why I'm here, just to see if there's any questions and ask for approval to apply.
Great. Are there any questions from any board members?
No, I think that you've done an outstanding job, and I think any grant money that comes along to help you out with what you've got for, you know, projects coming on board, please, let's go forward and help you out as best we can.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, and we vote to authorize the application for the 2017 Mass DEP grant and accept any and all funds that they want to send our way.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thanks, Amy, for waiting. The next item, Mrs. Jacobson?
Thank you, and thank you also to Amy for all the work she does, and Darlene for their hard work on this. The next item is item 6B, which is, I'm sorry, item 6C.
Actually, we moved up...
We moved up B.
Is there a motion to move up item 6C?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 6C is moved up. Road signage information.
Thank you. This is a response to public comment that was received by the board at its May 22 meeting from a resident, Bob Patoukas, regarding some road signage and work. So, you've asked me to request the DPW Director to present some information to you in response to that, so Bill Coyle is...
Mr. Coyle, would you mind just coming up and joining us, just so we can hear you? We don't want to turn the air conditioners off.
Thank you. Good evening. As the town manager indicated back on May 22, a resident of Millbury Street, Mr. Bob Patoukas, came in to public comment and had some concerns relative to signage on Millbury Street between the section of Route 20 and the Millbury-Auburn Town Line, and a couple of concerns that he had. Number one was the lack of speed limit signs, also a concern relative to a road narrow sign that previously existed on Millbury Street. So, when you turn off of Route 20, just beyond the driveway of the Sovereign Bank, previously, prior to the winter months, there was a road narrow sign warning the motorists that the road does narrow after that intersection, and also he had requested, I believe, scenic road signs as well. After that meeting, the following week, I did drive out and look at the section of roadway that he had pointed out. The speed limit signs do exist. It was a, when you leave Millbury and come into Auburn, there's a new 30 mile per hour speed limit sign at that location. In the opposite direction, when you're heading into Millbury, there is a 30 mile per hour speed limit sign as well, but it was rather faded, so we just recently, actually, today, replaced that sign with a new 30 mile per hour speed limit sign. So, hopefully, that will address his concerns relative to speed limit signs. There's one in each direction now. The road narrow sign was installed, and we will be ordering the scenic road signs. It's not something that we would typically have, and once those come in, we would install one scenic road sign for each direction of travel.
Great, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Berthew?
I have a general question, because it's come up from other constituents about signage. What is the process for, to put, say, a stop sign or any of these signs, if it's not an existing sign but a new sign needed at a street corner?
A great question, because we get calls all the time at DPW regarding signage, and I think the general public is not aware, and I wouldn't expect them to be aware, of the extensive process that certain signs require. Stop signs, as we had recently on Booth Road, would require a public hearing by the Board of Selectmen. of Selectmen for a stop sign, because, just because you're entering from a secondary to a primary road, you don't necessarily have to have a stop sign at every intersection. There's certain warrants in the manual that, it's called the MUTCD, MUTCD, it's the Manual on Uniform Traffic Controlled Devices. It's about three inches thick. It's a national manual that all the states have to follow for when you want to put up a stop sign. Speed limit signs, truck exclusions, any sign you can imagine, because obviously you want consistency throughout the country with signage and pavement markings and traffic signals. So, this is a standard that we're supposed to follow. So, when someone does call and ask for a stop sign, the first thing I look at, what are the warrants for the stop sign? And it's not used for traffic calming, sometimes you'll drive other communities in the city and see stop signs at a very random location that was put up to stop, slow traffic down, and that's typically not the purpose of a stop sign. So, for stop signs, that's a pretty involved process. Speed limit signs is, the speed limit signs are even more involved. That not only requires the public hearing, but also requires state approval for a speed limit sign. And the, the actual method of determining the speed limit is also complicated, it's based on the 85th percentile of what the traffic is traveling on a roadway. Everybody who drives that roadway is basically a voting member on what is a safe and reasonable speed to travel that roadway. So, you would actually go out with a radar gun, and I'll get to that, I might not have the exact numbers, but normally probably eight hours that you would monitor, I think two days in a row, and you would plot what is 85% of the people, what speed are they traveling at? Because that, again, is the national standard. I think the assumption that 85% of the people are operating at a safe and reasonable speed may not be the best assumption, it may be more like 70%, but that's the national standard. So, again, the thing you have to be careful with, I always caution people, the speed limit could go up. So, if you come in and you're concerned about people speeding on your road, well, they don't announce that they're out there doing this study, they don't go out in cruises to do the study, this is a random vehicle that you don't know who they are, so if your speed limit is 30 miles per hour, and they go out and do this study, and it comes out that 42% of the people are traveling, I'm sorry, 85% of the people are traveling at 42 miles per hour, now the speed limit should be posted at 40. So, you have to be careful what you wish for.
What you ask for.
Okay, so that's that. And then truck exclusions are another whole complicated issue. Truck exclusions also require state approval, alternate routes, very complicated, very certain specific percentages on truck traffic. So, I know it's a very long answer to your question, but it's a very good question, and I think a lot of people, and they wouldn't know, that a lot, there's a lot involved with certain signs.
Thank you, that's a great answer.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Probably for such a long answer.
Mr. Caffington has a question.
This isn't the planning board, Bill, given those long, long answers. I just had a question, did you have a chance to talk to Mr. Patoukas and let him know what you were doing?
I have not yet, I did want to report back to the Board of Selectmen tonight. I will call Mr. Patoukas and make sure that what we are doing satisfies his concerns. So, I will give him a call this week and let him know that some of the signs that we have not put up are on order, and make sure that I interpreted his comments correctly, because I know those, I wrote the comments down that evening, but sometimes the way I'm interpreting it may not be what was intended. So, I will call him to make sure he's satisfied.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting.
You're very welcome.
We've only got about eight or nine more agenda items.
Can we move up item General?
No, we cannot, not accepting that motion. Moving on with the agenda.
There's a ready second if you want.
So, our next item is Boards and Committee reappointments. Under the Finance Committee, Mr. Kevin Kennedy and Mr. Trevor Sanzousi have advised that they would like to be reappointed to the Finance Committee for terms expiring June 30, 2020. There are no applicants, no additional applicants, with the Board's past practice, if there were no other applicants and an incumbent member requested to be reappointed, we didn't require that they come in. So, what's the Board's wishes regarding their reappointments?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Kevin Kennedy and Trevor Sanzousi to the Finance Committee, to terms expiring June 30, 2020.
Second.
So, just for, just for the record, could we clarify, put in the motion what precinct they represent?
Sure. Mr. Kennedy represents Precinct 1, Mr. Sanzousi represents Precinct 2.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding these appointments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. And similar, on the Zoning Board of Appeals, Michael Marin and Megan Roach have advised that they would like to be reappointed.
Make a motion that we reappoint Michael Marin and Megan Roach to the Zoning Board of Appeals, to terms expiring June 30, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. Moving on to gift acceptance, in accordance with Mass General Act, Chapter 44, Section 53A, we have a donation in the amount of $1,570 from Central One Credit Union for the Fire Rescue Department, and the gift will be used for a two-year lease on the EMS motorcycle. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we accept this with gratitude with a letter to be signed by the Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. And moving on, we have a donation of $2,500 from Polar Beverages that goes to the Town Managers Recreation Department, and is designated for the Summer Concert Series, the 2017 Summer Concert Series.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we accept with gratitude with a letter to be sent, signed by the Chair.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. Mrs. Jacobson, did you want to comment on that?
I did, on both, really, we want to thank the community for supporting our initiatives, and want to thank Polar for supporting the Summer Concert Series. We did, I just want to notice, make mention that we did start, we kicked off the series last Thursday, was our opening event, and all of our calendars are online, it's, as every summer, it is through the entire summer, every Thursday evening from 6 to 8. If it rains Thursday evening, there's an automatic rain date of the following Tuesday from 6 to 8, unless for some reason the performers couldn't commit to both dates. In most cases, we have that backup date for rain. So, crush your fingers for happy sunny Thursdays, and we thank Polar for their contributions to make this possible.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on, we have proclamations and recognitions. We have a request for a ribbon-cutting citation for Edward Jones, and I believe most members or all members received an invitation for the ribbon-cutting to take place this Wednesday, the 14th. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to issue a citation for the grand opening of Edward Jones on Albert Street for this Wednesday, June 14, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. Moving on, we have two drain layers licenses. The first one is for Bodeo Contractors, who was a previous licensed, held a previous drain layers license in the town, enclosed is the application. Are there any questions? Is this in short form, because they have been previously licensed in the town? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its department, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. The next application we have is for a new drain layers license for East Land Partners Incorporated of Natick, Mass. This is a long-form application, everything that, per our policy, is in here. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its department, board, and the commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. The next item we have is a designation of a member to the Board Policy Subcommittee. So, over the last couple meetings, we've made motions to send items to the Policy Subcommittee. I've actually worked on this Subcommittee since, looked back at it, 2011 with Mrs. Brotherton, Mrs. Brotherton is no longer here, I've served on it since 2011. I'm hoping that we will have at least one member willing to serve, and potentially two who are willing to look at the policies that have been sent to the Subcommittee.
Madam Chair, I would be very much interested in taking part in that Board Policy Subcommittee. I know that we've had some discussions over the past with some of the policies, and with a little bit of background in what we've discussed and what we have here, I'd be more than willing to jump in on that Policy Subcommittee with you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Don't look at me, I spend all my time on Policy Committee.
Mr. Berthew? Thank you, Mr. Berthew. So, the Chairman will appoint Mr. Berthew and Mr. Holstrom to the Policy Subcommittee. And Sharon will let you know of the motions that the Board has made, the most recent items we've sent to the Policy Committee. Thanks so much. And those meetings do have to be posted, and Sharon will help you with that. Thank you. Moving on to Town Manager items, we've taken care of the first couple, so we are looking at the Housing Plan Community Meeting, and you have a flyer in your packet. Mrs. Jacobson?
Through the chair, I know this was on a previous agenda, but I just wanted a reminder for the public as well, because this meeting will take place prior to your next meeting on the 26th, so I thought it was one last opportunity to let everybody know about this. It should be a good meeting, again, we have a $25,000 grant from the state that's allowing us to put together a housing plan. We have a Housing Subcommittee that's just doing a tremendous job, working with the CMRPC and the consultant, Karen Sonenberg, to work on this, on this plan. Under the grant, we will have to finalize the housing plan by the end of September. I think the committee, the Board's vote this evening to transfer the two properties for senior housing will be an enormous boost to the housing plan, as it will address a lot of the strategies that we're already talking about for the housing plan. So, there's a great connection here, the timing's really nice. So, anyway, there is a community meeting on June 22 from 7 to 9 p.m. It's in the high school presentation room, and we encourage residents to come, the Subcommittee will be there, the CMRPC will be there, and they'll be presenting a lot of the data that they've collected so far, and trying to start putting together some strategies for our housing plan, which ultimately will be incorporated into the master plan. So, I want to thank everyone involved, and hopefully people can make it to this meeting. And I should say, if you cannot come to the meeting and you still want to weigh in on it, we're always accepting of any written comments that you want to be, you want to provide to Town Managers Office, Board of Selectmen's Office, we just want to have the public input, and we understand people can't always make it. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item also in your packet is the Farmers Market, Mrs. Jacobson?
Through the chair, you will find a press release in your packet from the Cultural Commission, Auburn. This is actually a joint effort, it's brand-new, and it's an effort of the town through our Recreation and Culture Department, as well as the Paketchog Church and the Cultural Commission, all of whom have been working to put on a new farmers' and cultural market. The launch will be on, the kickoff, June 25, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Riley Pappas Performance Pavilion at the Recreation Center at 203 and 1/2 Paketchog Street. The market, we're going to have products from local farms and local businesses, we're still seeking vendors. The event will be held monthly on the last Sunday of every month through the end of October, so the last Sunday in June is the kickoff, so last Sunday in July, last Sunday in August, and last Sunday in September, and the last Sunday in October. So, each of those days, it will, we recognize it will take time to get it fully underway with vendors, but we do have some vendors to start, and we hope that as it takes off, we'll get more. So, please, if you have any thoughts or suggestions on who we can reach out to, the Cultural Commission and Paketchog Church have done a lot of outreach, has Kristen Pappas. So, collectively working together, we're really excited about it. It's just another great use of our facility, it's another great community use, you know, when that facility was built, we talked about using the Performance Pavilion, now we have concerts there, now we'll have a farmers' market, just trying to do different things to appeal to different segments of the population, and I think this will be a really good initiative. So, I want to thank everybody involved, and hopefully we get a good turnout, and certainly, if not the first, the first month, we understand it takes time for these things to get going, but we're excited.
Excellent, thank you.
Just a question, assuming that the vendors can be from out of town?
Correct, yes. And it is a challenge to get farmers, a lot of, over the last few years, a lot of farmers' markets, first of all, they book at least a year in advance to participate in farmers' markets, so it's hard to get a date. I know there was a struggle in getting a date that we could actually hold this, because you don't want to compete, there aren't that many participating farmers in central Massachusetts. The other, the other challenge that we found is a lot of them are doing farm-to-table events, and they are not as available to do the traditional farmers' market. So, in this case, we're trying to, it's not just a farmers' market, we're offsetting it with some cultural activities, which would be the Cultural Commission's aim, is to have culture as well. So, we will have music, we'll have a bouncy house, we're trying to incorporate art and culture and other non-farming events, as well as the farmer market. So, it's a broader-based project.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that? Great, thank you. And do you have any, anything else before we move on to tabled items?
No, I think we said, through the chair, we would have another opportunity to let everyone know, but again, the Independence Day event, the annual Independence Day event will be after your next Board meeting, but I'll mention it anyway, it is Thursday, June, I want to get my dates right, 29th, with a rain date of Friday, June 30. And we're looking forward to it, and we're looking forward to good weather, we hope.
And I'm going to move on to tabled items, but if you would, if you couldn't just do me a favor, I'm checking for an email, I know the Chief had asked us to mention the Citizens Police Academy, if you could just pull that information up for me while we move on to...
Sure.
To the Board of Selectmen's goals and objectives, we're back at this. So, the Board has voted to have our goals carried from the fiscal year, rather than the calendar year, to, so that newly-elected or re-elected Board members can participate. So, these are proposed goals that we looked at before Mr. Lo Liberty joined the Board. I'm not sure, we have one more meeting before we start the fiscal year, which is in two weeks. Not sure what members want to do, if they want to look at this tonight with a late hour, if we want to hold it to the next meeting. Mr. Lo Liberty, you're certainly welcome to bring forward any goals that you would like the Board to look at, and then, depending on how many goals we want to work on, I would think it would maybe be reasonable to have members propose one goal each, you know, one final goal each. These are some that we had looked at, but, you know, a goal that's important to you. So, do we want to look at this tonight? Do we want to give Mr. Lo Liberty...
I would make a motion that we table it to the next meeting.
Okay. The motion has been made to table it to the next meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is voted to table this. Go ahead, and I'm just going to ask Mrs. Jacobson to read the letter from the Chief.
Please pass on this announcement to the Board of Selectmen and ask them to announce it at an upcoming meeting. This is a great program that has been very well-received by our residents in the past. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for our residents to get a firsthand look at how their police department functions. I'd also like to extend an invitation to each of our Board of Selectmen members to take part in the Citizen Police Academy if they have room in their busy schedules. So, the Police Academy announcement is for Wednesday evenings from 6 to 9 p.m., beginning September 20th and going through November 15th. If you're interested, you can certainly let us know, or just contact directly to Sergeant Dan Lamro. And in your, in your email, I've sent you his email address, and for you or for the public, to contact him at 508-832-7777.
And I'll just state again that I did go through the Citizens Police Academy, I referred many people to it, and people just, just find it so informative to really have a true understanding. We think we know how the police department operates, but it's really a breakdown of why we do what we do, when we do it in the police department. And, you know, our police officers who take time on their nights off or whatever to come in and talk to the citizens is really impressive. So, I would... So, I would highly recommend the Citizens Police Academy.
And through the chair, the chief has also extended the offer before, and I know whenever we do orientations for new board members, we've offered, if you want to have a ride-along with, in the police cruiser for one of the shifts, the chief would arrange that. And I know Mr. LaLiberty went along on a ride-along, was it last week perhaps?
It was actually, yeah, it was just this past week.
Okay.
Thursday, we went along with Dan Lamro, actually.
Yeah. So, it's a great opportunity to firsthand see, A, how busy the department is, and B, how professionally run and operated they are.
So, do we have any Board of Selectmen member items? So, I just, and this is very new information. I need to talk to the town manager to see how we move forward, but I need to announce that after, when we took our break, that the fur friends have asked me to announce that they are withdrawing their support of the 10%. This has been a process that they didn't anticipate going the way it has gone. They did present me with the petition and the emails and feel strongly that there is great support in town for a dog park, but moving forward, they are withdrawing their 10%. I'll talk to Mrs. Jacobson. They don't, you know, they've asked me to say this, I don't, you know, they don't know what's out there, but if there's another group or a business or somebody that wants to pledge the 10%, but they are officially out. So, we will have a conversation with the chairman of the Dog Park Committee and Mrs. Jacobson and see if we move forward, how we move forward on that. So, I will have that information available at the next meeting.
Madam Chair, if I may, excuse me, there was a lot of concerns, a lot of questions, and it's unfortunate they've pulled their support from this because they have been, the people that have really wanted to have this, but it seems like it's either they want or they don't want, and if it's not their way, it's the highway, and I kind of don't agree with it. I think that if they want to have a dog park, then they should stay, stand in support, continue with the process, and let all the information come out, just as some of the board members have asked here tonight, that, you know, with the discussions, there's been a lot more information needed, so let's go forward with it. And for them to pull out kind of early on this, I guess, it's not really early, we've gone through a lot of this, but a lot more information has come out, and they've requested it, and I'm sorry, they pulled out. So, I would say that on June 26 meeting, we don't have any discussion on it at all until we get back some kind of word from somebody that they're in support of the 10%. Otherwise, it's a, it's moot. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any additional public comment? We have the minutes from March 20, 2017, and the minutes from April 10, 2017. Are there any corrections or omissions?
Madam Chair, I'm just going to ask if we can hold it. I didn't get to go through either one.
All right. So, Mr. Holstrom has asked, I'm sorry, Mr. Capenter has asked that we hold these until the next meeting.
Madam Chair, if I may, yesterday was kind of a very important day as far as the town, the fire department, which I've been a long member, a longtime member of, and it was very, very important, especially with us being the 100th anniversary this year. We started in September 11, 1917, and this is the year we're having a few programs. And we had our Firefighters Memorial Sunday yesterday, and I'd like to thank all the members that were there, the retirees that had come back, some had traveled in from Florida. They had come in to, just to visit and be part of it. A lot of retired members have come back, and then our active members also. But I'd also like to thank the towns around us, Southbridge, Oxford, Millbury, Stirbridge, that were able to attend, and I know that the thoughts of the other communities around us were with us that day. It's very, very important that we remember the people who have gone before us that have sacrificed a lot of their time, their energy with their friends and family, and we thank them all for their due sacrifices, and we thank you very much. It was a great day yesterday, and good to see some of the people come back. And our town manager was there, Mr. Capenter was there, and so we were well-represented from the town, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you, and good night.
We are adjourned.